All righty. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access.
As usual.
As usual, yes. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance.
Steph, what do you want to?
Honored, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Got a pre-packed agenda, so we'll start off. Anyone here for Citizens Input? Anyone? Anybody text or email us to say anything? Okay, great. We have a public hearing at 7:05. We're a tad early, and I believe we have to start exactly at 7:05. So why don't we bop down to some action items, get them out of the way, and that'll take us to 7:05. What do you think?
Sounds good.
All right.
All right. Motion to approve the extended hours request for all Sundays in 2024 to begin alcohol service, starting at 10:00 a.m. for Steve's Lakeview Incorporated, DBA Lakeview Pavilion at 45 Lakeview Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the donation of $1,000 for senior programs on behalf of Joseph Prue and Jennings Fleming for the Council on Aging and Human Services.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the donation of $2,100 to purchase Chromebooks for Kids Coding Club from the Rotary Club of Foxborough to the Boydin Library.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the donation of $200 from Thomas and Linda Buckley for the Foxborough Fire Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Here, thank you. All right. Motion to approve. Sorry, it's just taking a second to catch up.
We've got plenty of time.
All right. Motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from December 5th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yep, I just wouldn't refresh for a second. Motion to approve two new gift accounts, one called Memorial Bunches and one General Bench Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right. Still have a couple of minutes, so I'm going to sneak in a little bit of Selectmen's update. The annual town meeting will be May 13th, 2024. And having said that, the warrant is now open. All articles submitted to be sent to the town manager's office, and the closing date is the end of business day, February 15th, 2024. Any, well, any other new business?
Did you say the 18th or 13th?
I said the 13th it opens. The annual town meeting is the 13th. Okay. No, Army-Navy game was sort of old business. It was absolutely a phenomenal event for the town. The entire weekend was phenomenal. Public safety is here. A little bit weighted to fire today. Sorry, Chief Grace, but no fall, you guys. Yeah, a phenomenal job. Friday, Saturday, the run-through town, the kids along South Street, and then certainly the game. I've talked to both chiefs, and they said it went off like clockwork. And all that preparation was, I guess, worth it because you guys did great. Sure, maybe a little part of your presentation will be with it, and I'm sure when Chief Grace's department has their presentation, a little bit more would be brought up again. But it was truly very patriotic, very wonderful event for the town. Do you want to do Coach Downs, since you like doing that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I want to congratulate Coach Lisa Downs on getting Coach of the Year. What a fabulous for high school sports this year, between football and basketball being state champs. I don't even know if we've, you know, if we've had that within a year's time, two of the major teams actually winning. So congratulations. She's phenomenal. Her team is in it every year, you know.
Is this her third championship too?
It may be. It may be. But I know, yeah, did they win two years in a row, did they? A couple of years, I think it was a couple of years before. But anyhow, she's been involved in the program for a very, very long time. Her teams are always successful, and that honor is absolutely well-deserved for Lisa. So congratulations, Lisa, for the Board of Selectmen. Very, very, very happy for you.
Awesome.
We didn't cover the sidewalk John Mahoney issue, if you want to?
Yeah, we can bring that up. During Citizens Input, the last board meeting, John Mahoney brought up a couple of points. He wants to work with one of the board members in trying to bring those three actions forward. He texted me and asked if Seth wouldn't mind working with him, and Seth said he'd be honored.
Great choice.
So Seth is going to help him out.
Perfect.
All right. And I'll email him back tomorrow morning, too. Thank you for reminding me about that.
Katie reminded me, but.
All right. 7:06.
All right. And since this is a public hearing, I'm going to read the notice, since you already kind of kicked off the item.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, please.
Bear with me. It doesn't really read too easily, and it's long. Notice is hereby provided pursuant to General Law Chapter 138, Section 12, 16A, and 64, General Law Chapter 140, Section 9, and the rules and regulations for holders of alcoholic beverages license in the town of Foxborough, that a public hearing will be convened before the Foxborough Select Board in its capacity as local licensing authority on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, at 7:05, relative to the renewal and alleged violations of the restaurant all-alcohol beverages license and the common vitular license issued for the premises identified as Olive and Mint Ambrosia located at 2 Washington Street, Foxborough, which occurred at or with respect to said licenses premises during the term of the calendar year 2023 license. The public hearing will take place in the Gala Meeting Room at Foxborough Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So we should have Pat Costello on Zoom, I believe. And we do just need a motion to open the public hearing after that's read. So motion to open the public hearing here.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Do we have Pat?
I think Mr. Beck is working on it.
Good evening, members of the board. How are you? What we have tonight is a joint hearing relative to...
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
He's trying to, well, now we see you.
Okay.
You should go up a little bit. Hold on, Pat, before you start talking. Let us just make sure the volume is right.
Okay.
He's used to this with us.
Do we have the representatives come up to the table, too?
Yes.
Representatives for all of them in, come on up to the table.
Just say hello, Pat, so we can check your volume.
Hello.
Still a little low, Mr. Beck.
Be louder.
All right, yeah. All right, Pat, we'll just have you maybe speak a little louder. We can hear you, but it's kind of soft.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This evening, the board has a public hearing relative to two particular items regarding the alcoholic beverage license. One is...
Can I, Pat, one quick thing? Just go ahead and introduce yourself, so people at home know who you are and why you're here.
Absolutely. My name is Pat Costello. I am town council for the town of Foxborough, and I have been working in conjunction with town offices reviewing the circumstances regarding these particular licenses, and I've been asked to participate in this hearing here this evening.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. So we have before the board tonight, number one, the renewal of the restaurant all-alcoholic beverages license, and number two, there have been complaints asserted with respect to the premises during the past calendar year. Thus, the board has an opportunity at this hearing, should it choose to do so, to suspend or revoke the subject license for the remainder of the calendar year. As you know, these annual licenses expire on December 31st each year, and the applicant is required to submit the package for renewal of the license in November, which I understand has been properly completed. The hearing here tonight is going to address, as I noted, both the remaining term of the present year's license for another week or so, and then the renewal of the license. It's very important to note, as has been discussed with town officers, that the renewal of a license is de facto subject to approval unless the board has cause to deny or reject the renewal application. So you should treat the renewal hearing, in this particular case, in the same manner that you would a hearing relative to an inserted violation of a license. The burden of proof will be the same. The board will have to establish just cause for denying a renewal in this particular instance. And I understand that present here tonight, as I could see in the audience, are various town officials who will offer testimony and evidence to the board relative to issues that have been noted and violations that have been cited within their respective jurisdictions over the course of the past year. The Select Board can certainly consider the conduct of the operation under the existing license over the past 12 months, and both the determination whether to suspend or revoke or impose some other penalty, such as a fine, with regard to the violations, and/or whether or not it chooses to renew the license, the all-alcoholic beverage license, for the subject premises. Now, in conjunction with the renewal of the alcoholic beverages licenses, the restaurant license, there is also an application pending before the board to renew the common victual license, which goes hand in hand with the alcoholic beverage license. And the provisions of General Law Chapter 138 and Chapter 140 provide that when a select board in its capacity as local licensing authority is considering revocation, suspension, and/or renewal of an alcoholic beverage license that has been issued to a license holder who also has a common victual license, the two go hand in hand. Action should be taken in conjunction with one another with regard to both licenses. So the first matter I would suggest that the board address this evening would be its action with regard to the alcoholic beverage licenses. Number one, whether or not it deems any penalty or suspension or revocation to be appropriate for the remainder of calendar year 2023. And then, secondly, whether it chooses to renew that license for calendar year 2024. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions so far?
I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I've seen the Olive and Mint Restaurant many times. I've driven by it. I've eaten there. When it's in good shape and in full compliance, it's a very attractive establishment. But I've always wondered why it wasn't busier and didn't do more business. And for a while, I don't know what the current status is. It appears to me it was closed for a period of time, and now you're coming back. And I'm just wondering what you think will be different about the patronage of this restaurant this time, if you are approved. I'm just curious about some of that history.
So I think that's important. I think we'll skip.
We can come back.
Hold that for a second, so maybe you can introduce yourselves.
Yeah, can we just do a point of order, too, just to make sure I understand, Pat? So, Pat, we're going to look at this from an alcohol standpoint first, and then, after that's all done, from a common vitular?
Or can it be done?
Was it, was it the order?
That's what I would recommend. That's how I would recommend that the board proceed this evening. Because in the event that the board does decide to revoke the alcohol license or not renew the alcohol license, in essence, any action with respect to the common victual license should be suspended until the appeal period before action for an appeal on the alcohol decision expires. As you may recall, under Section 67 of Chapter 138, the applicant, the license holder, has five days from the issuance of the board's decision to appeal it to the ABCC. So the common victual is licensed and, in fact, remains suspended or in limbo during that period of time and isn't subject to further action by the board. So by addressing the alcohol license first, I think you'll have a much clearer picture procedurally as to where you go from there.
Okay. And they're both covered under the same public hearing, and I can close all that at the end together. Okay.
Yes, knowing that both of these licenses are up for, obviously, renewal for the same period, and were both subject to the same issues that had arisen, the notice covers both the alcoholic beverage and common victual is licensed. But as I noted, well, why don't we see how things proceed with regard to the alcohol license, and then we'll reconnoitre and figure out where we go from there.
Okay, great. Please.
Hi. Good evening, board members. My name is Nina Freus, and I am an attorney who has been asked to represent the interest tonight of Nervy Incorporated, as well as both of these gentlemen here to my left, who represent the ownership of the property, as well as the current management of the property. And so to go to the question that was put before my clients is, why is there, what's going on with the business, and why is it sort of quieter now than it used to be? And I do want to let you know that this is somewhat short notice, and I'm new to the facts of this case, so I might at some point ask them to fill in. But my understanding is that they've owned the property for seven years, and the business for seven years, but after COVID hit, as so many businesses had to, they closed the restaurant portion. So it's a restaurant as well as a function space. The actual restaurant, that portion of the property, has been closed since COVID, but they still do use the function hall for cultural events, weddings, baby showers, you name it. And so that portion of the business is what their main revenue is. A few years ago, I believe they had entered into a tentative agreement to sell because they have a large parcel of property, and they were trying to sell that property, to develop it, and they were going to completely get out of the restaurant business. Well, that didn't happen, and so that caused a sort of a snowball effect with the falling behind on taxes and not paying fees, not keeping up with things, because their thought was, we're moving in a different direction, moving away from this whole food operation, and we're selling and developing this property. Well, they've had to start over again, essentially, come back from that, and now they're saying, okay, we're going to, actually, so they've actually made an action plan where they're going to bring in professional management. They understand that there were a few events where there were too many cars. There were not police detail to make sure a safe and speedy exit of all of the vehicles. They have a large capacity at that event space, and so when you have that many cars, it just didn't go well. And so now they've actually worked with the town police, which I believe they'll be able to testify to that, at least the most recent event. Things were orderly and expeditious, and people got out fine, but the noise was in the parking lot, people afterwards, that having the police officers there, that's not going to happen. And that's something that could be remedied. Regarding the alcohol license, as far as I know, I mean, they've never been cited for any underage drinking. They've never been cited for over-serving. I mean, the really dangerous aspects of an alcohol license that really are, I think, a menace to the community. Their issues here, it seems more like parking issues and people in the parking lot issues, which can be remedied by proper security personnel, and they're willing to do that going forward. I mentioned that they're partnering. They recently secured funding to partner with a professional company that does hospitality. They're well-trained on all aspects of hospitality, and going forward, they don't want to be having these problems with the town. It's not what they want. They want to be on the good side of the town. They want to be able to employ people and bring business to the town and actually be on board with their taxes. I believe they made the final payment today. They are really trying to remedy these situations and maintain their license and have it renewed, and maintain it for this year, as well as have it renewed into next year. Being so close to the end of the year and just receiving all of this notification now, it doesn't give them a lot of time to prove they're good intentions going forward. And the only way to actually show this town what they're planning to do is to actually allow them to try and do it, which would really require you guys to take a leap of faith in that regard. I'm just trying to look over the notes here. And so far as the sanitation standards and other issues that were determined, I believe that the fire department and other officials will be here to speak regarding that. My clients are willing to do what is required. There are certain fixes that were very easy, according to the reports that I read. Several of them were things like moving things out of the way of the doors. That's not a big deal. There were others that were larger, such as repairing roofs. They actually had someone come out, and they said, you can't really do the roof repair right now because of the weather. It has to be done at a different time. So they have spoken to them and talked about doing a patch or a smaller repair until springtime, when it's appropriate temperature. I don't know much about rubber roofs, but you know what I'm talking about. So it's not a lack of will on their part. I think the point was that they had moved away from this idea of doing this business, and then when their other plan, their contingency plan fell apart, now they're coming back and saying, okay, what do we have to do in order to keep this going? So bringing in a new management company, using the services of the fire department, I'm sorry, the police department for traffic control, I believe this discussed for overflow parking with other businesses in the area, being able to rent for overflow parking to alleviate those problems when they come up. There are several points that Nandish Patel, the owner of Nervy Inc., he sent a letter, which I don't have enough copies for all of you.
We have.
But he addressed, he goes over all. Did he send it to you by email?
We sent it.
Yeah, it went to the town.
You did receive an email from him today?
Oh, if it's today.
It basically, I received it today. You might have received it sooner.
Is it dated November 9th?
No. It's not dated. The one that I have is not dated.
And I read it was not dated either, because I remember that it was not dated.
Yes. And so where he just goes, he just had three major bullet points that basically goes over the ideas that we discussed, that I have discussed. And so basically, the restaurant in itself is not an operation. The kitchen that's in the function space is really the only part that is being used. And any issues that are in reports, which will be discussed by the officials that are here, they're willing to fix them. And, you know, if the board wants to impose a fine, I just, I don't, I don't know what that would necessarily achieve, although, like I said, I think that they should be provided with an opportunity to actually write the situation, because as your board member Keith mentioned, that back before COVID hit, it was in fine operating order, and it was under their management. So they are able to do it.
Okay. So introduce these gentlemen to us.
Myself, Bukesh Patel. I'm the manager of the property.
And is it your name on the liquor license?
Yes.
Okay.
Anil Patel, owner of the property.
Owner of the property.
Correct.
And new management company that you're referring to?
There is a Brazilian party. They are interested to take over the property on a lease, and they say that we will do everything on that.
So they'll be...
And that part, we are trying to fix it, whatever we have to fix it, and we will give it to them. And after that, they will run the operation.
They are big decorators, and they are very nice for weddings.
They are in a stoppage.
Their plan is to go convert the place back to same as a wedding function hall. And they have a lot to do over there, and they're going to be doing best of best. And they're going to be all the time over there, so there is no issue.
Can we ask Pat a question? So, Pat, it sounds like they're proposing a management company, and therefore I assume someone else's name on the license who's not here. Just curious how that works, given...
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Leah. A couple of statements have been made that, you know, just raise some concern in my mind. Number one, the board is being informed tonight, I assume for the first time, that the restaurant is not, in fact, being operated. The license, when it was initially issued, I believe contemplated that this would be, the alcoholic beverages would be served in a license, in a license premises, including a restaurant. It may include a function hall as well, but if the restaurant portion of the premises is not being utilized, that's something that the board should have been notified of promptly, and the license should have been altered or adjusted by its terms accordingly. Now, secondly, I'm assuming that the license, that the manager named in the existing license is going to continue to serve in that capacity. But again, we are hearing for the first time this evening that a management company is contemplated to be brought on board. Now, it's not clear whether that management company would merely be a contractor assisting the premises manager named in the license, or whether they would be taking over that responsibility. These are all matters that I would suggest should be fleshed out at that...
Yeah, you mentioned the lease going to them. That's what made me think it was more than just contractor.
I believe it has yet to be worked out. At this time, this is...
This is the first time we're hearing about the potential.
Yes. It has yet to be worked out. And just to address town council's concern regarding the liquor license and the restaurant not operating, there is a kitchen in, and I understand what you're saying, that it's a different license if it's only a banquet as opposed to an everyday restaurant. If that is something that has to be addressed, I believe that their plan is to, at some point, reopen the restaurant, but they have to address all of these violations first.
Let's get into them.
But there is a kitchen in the banquet hall, so there is food being prepared and served.
I would recommend you start with Matt Brennan from the Health Department.
You want to start with Matt?
I think so.
Okay.
Do you need us to take a seat?
Matt could sit here.
Okay.
Yeah, any town person's going to come up here. So no, you guys can stay there.
Well, Matt's coming up. Can I ask, Pat, are you saying that they should have two different liquor licenses for that property, one for the function hall and one for the restaurant?
No, it's one, but it's got both. We've got to look into see if they're...
They didn't bend it to say, we close this, but this is open.
Okay.
Right. That's correct.
And the letters aren't from either of you, that's someone with a, sorry, I forget the first name, but it was started with Matt.
Nandish.
And who's not here.
He's not here. He's out of the country at the moment.
Okay. Just trying to get everyone straight.
Yeah.
Okay.
We both was there, but I just came back for this issue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Let everybody know who you are.
Hi, everybody. Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health for the town of Foxborough. Members of the Select Board, just to give you some history regarding the Health Department enforcement, I issued a notice of no further renewal to the owners of Olive and Mint on November 14th, 2023, due to multiple violations. Since that time, some things have been repaired, but not all. The first was pursuant to the town's bylaws and code. I can't issue a food permit due to the fact that, at that time, excessive amounts of back taxes was owed to the town. And to this day, I believe, taxes are still owed to the town. So until that point, until those are paid, I would be unable to issue... Until that point, until those are paid, I would be unable to issue a food permit. I'm sorry, do you wanna?
They paid it today. So you.
Well, just to clarify, checks were dropped off, but they were not bank checks. So they haven't cleared and they came in later today. So, and I believe there are still some water liens outstanding, but those aren't due till February 1st and May 1st, but they were, have been due. So yes, massive amounts of money were paid today, but it's in process.
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's okay. Also, just in 2023, the health department permit that I issued them stated that they couldn't use the restaurant space. Now, I've talked to Sunny, the owner's son regarding it.
Sunny is a Nandish.
And, you know, their, their interpretation of the permit was they're not using it as a restaurant. My interpretation of it is you can't use the restaurant space. If you can see our building and health department reports that are in those packets, I mean, you could kind of see why. You know, the reports that we recently showed show water damage coming into the bill, through the roof, roof damage, wall damage, evidence of, evidence of mice, all things which were against the permit and for some of the reasons why we asked them not to use that space. Also, on November 9th, I was made aware by the building department that it was over capacity, which they've stated a little bit about that event today. Due to, due to those circumstances, the building department reached out to the owner and stated he needed a certificate of inspection, basically a clean bill of health from the building department that all the violations or it is code compliant. Unfortunately, the building department and the fire department inspected it yesterday and it didn't receive those, that certificate of inspection because it wasn't compliant because of the violations cited. On September 20th, another reason, on September 20th, 2023, I was notified by the town of Walpole that their board of water and sewer commissioners were planning on taking action against Olive Inment, basically for non, for non-payment of the sewer charges. So as a result, on December 7th, 2023, the town of Walpole placed a lien on the property for non-payment of the sewer. So that was obviously a concern without sewer, you know, they couldn't run the business. Also, lastly, in July of 2021, actually when I first started this position, unfortunately, I had to suspend the permit of Olive Inment. And that was for not maintaining it in a clean and sanitary condition, failing to exterminate and for it to be free of rodents, and failing to comply with building and fire department officials. So much of those reasons why the suspension happened in 2021 are happening again in 2023. So therefore, in terms of the health department, today, I don't feel that I can even, you know, until we're sure that all the taxes and all, everything that's owed is paid, I can't issue a permit. Also, he needs to go in front of the board of health for a hearing. So I can't issue the food permit until the board of health signs off. This is something that was done in November due to the fact of the, you know, of what was happening at that time. You know, things have changed. But again, we'll, we'll be leaving it to the board of health if we're going to issue a food permit at that time, as well as there's many violations, as you can see outlined in those, that report, that there's building code, fire code violations that have to be addressed before occupancy of the building can take place. So I feel like if the board wanted to, you know, after the taxes are paid and after all the building code, health code, fire code violations are cured, then at that time, we could entertain a motion to, you know, approve the license or do whatever. But at this time, we're not there. And, you know, they don't have those approvals. So I, I would personally recommend that, you know, the board doesn't take action on this just because, you know, as of January 1st or December 31st, they don't have a health permit at this moment. And it's, it's going to be up to the board of health whether, you know, they get that permit. And that's going to be dependent on if they come into compliance with all the codes. So, and that's, that's what I have for you.
Any questions from the board for Matt?
So to summarize, they have a permit through the end of the year, but you can't issue a new one for 2024 is where we're at?
Correct.
Okay.
Until a hearing before the board of health.
And that is scheduled or?
It's scheduled. Once the tax, once the taxes are paid, I would be willing. The next available date would be January 22nd.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to be clear that no action from, from the select board is a viable, it's an option that we can take as opposed to revoke or prove.
Pat, did you hear that question from Seth?
I, I did. Yes. There's an awful lot of new information coming before the board tonight, coming to the town tonight that hadn't transpired before. I would suggest that with regard to the existing license, which expires on December 31st, the board could take no action as Matt has suggested because effective January 1st, they're not going to have their board of health permits or approvals in hand. So they really can't operate any food operations at, at the premises until the board of health issues those approvals. What, what could be, what could be a possible action is continuing this hearing until mid-January and taking no action on the renewal, you know, by agreement, hopefully, by stipulation with, with the license holder. That way, we could, the board of, of health could take its actions, its enforcement proceedings could be completed, and then the select board would have a much clearer picture before it in terms of the alcoholic beverage license.
But if we were to do that, Pat, there's events that are still happening, large scale events. We know that there's a New Year's Eve event planned because you're asking us to stay open late ironically, past when you're usually allowed to. So the concern with doing that potentially could be people are in a building that's unsafe between now and the end of the year. Is that, that, that could be the, the risk on that side.
That is, that is certainly a relevant factor that, that the board should keep in mind.
Well, and so I guess I, this kind of gave me a question for Matt. So with you saying about taking no action and giving them time to, to get things cleaned up. So your inspection is not, you don't feel like you need to shut them down for the remainder, for the remainder of 23?
So my, my inspection, based on the town bylaws, the taxes, everything, we felt that that was the way to do it. There are critical code violations there and those are new. I mean, we found those out yesterday. But again, in the terms of what I already have in my permit, not using the restaurant, I, area, I, I believe it would be fine. Unfortunately, we're finding out now that that's not really what's going on there. You know, they do have large scale events. They are putting, they are using that as an overflow or a function area. And those are some of the concerns that we have with, with the permit. But if, if they are, fall within the guidelines that we're trying to set, I mean, I would be comfortable until the end of the year.
So the other question is just Paula, or maybe Matt might even know the number while he's right up here. So I, like, I'm, I'm trying to follow the numbers. I see they owe in 21, 22. Bottom line, what do they owe in taxes?
We're gonna get to that. We're gonna get to that. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Should we do?
I clarify. So the banquet hall, I'm not putting words in your mouth, generally might be in compliance, but the restaurant itself, use of the restaurant itself really creates the, the major problem.
So it's a large facility and they don't use the amount of space, the amount of kitchens. So really, it was, that was a function on what was working at the facility and where it was safe to do so based off of fire, building and inspection. So it was that restaurant area that, you know, we had the most concern over.
And, and I saw, there was one that caught my eye. It was like a bourbon and cigar night. And it caught my eye because it was like smoking cigars and, you know, that caught my eye just as, as someone knowing what's going on there. And that was a smaller scale event. So are you using the restaurant space for a smaller scale event? Like the one that I saw pictures there?
We don't use the restaurant side.
Okay. That's all.
We never use. Right now, restaurant is closed from almost from COVID.
But the patio of the licensed premises.
Nobody is using patio either.
Well, I saw pictures of people on the patio at the cigars and bourbon night. But so is that part of the restaurant license premises or the function hall? Do we know? Because that is kind of off of the restaurant, if I remember.
The patio is on the restaurant side.
Yes, right.
Yes.
Okay.
We don't want to use, even now, that side totally be, be closed.
And even if you see the picture, I am not going to say no to you because the number of peoples came over there and somebody just want to relax and they opened the gate and they went over there and they smoked. But after all, like a hundred people, a hundred people is not over there. Couple of people might be seated over there.
So you're just using the banquet?
Yes. We are using the banquet right now.
And, and you two are the sole owners of the banquet facility?
Yes.
Let's, um, let's bring, uh.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. One more question. Whose name is actually on the liquor license?
It's me.
You. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt, can, can, you can smoke indoors?
No.
No, it was on the pad, this patio, that's part of the restaurant.
It's outside of the building.
Okay. I thought, I thought he said they don't use the patio though. Am I getting confused?
We, we did not change anything from day one we bought that place. Unless whatever they pinpoint, we are changing right away. 20 years ago, the place has a hole. They are pinpointing today and they said this is a violation. Yes, it is violation, but not done by us. And we are ready to change that whole thing. So major thing is that right now.
But the big question is, where was the smoking?
There was outside the building. There is a small side of the patio. She must be known.
Patio, yeah.
Yeah. It's nothing to do with the restaurant, nothing to do with the banquet.
It's, it's outside.
It's outside totally.
But it's part of your license premises.
Yes. I, I am not saying no, but I just want to.
Which is what we're here to talk about tonight.
Of course.
So people can smoke outside, obviously.
Correct.
And then they have an out, they have a drink, you know, it's.
They're not supposed to be drinking.
It's, you have to have a premise that you're allowed to drink and smoke and it has to be authorized. So it's questionable.
So I, I will say that was, that one event was a permanent event. They did have, they did contact the health department. It wa, it wasn't Mr. Patel. It was another agency who contacted us, got the permit. You know, we notified them, obviously in the permit read, no smoking inside. And, you know, we had them, we asked them to do the proper signage and everything. So just for your clarification on that one event.
That one just caught my eye because the smoking piece just caught my eye, you know?
No, absolutely.
Yeah, it's different.
Yeah. Chief Larissy?
I just wanted to.
Oh, no, come on up. Sorry.
Thanks, Matt. You get to sit next to me.
Let us know who you are.
I'm Dave Larissy, Deputy Fire Chief. I just wanted to clarify on the inspections. When we're talking about different areas of the building, when we inspect a building, the whole building gets inspected, whether they say they're not using this room or not using that room. We do, we do roof to basement, the whole building. So as we, as we go through inspections for deficiencies and everything, we have to be clear that we're inspecting the whole building. So when you license this building, you're licensing, you know, the whole building has to be in regards to public safety.
Because I would imagine from your perspective, it doesn't matter if you're using the banquet or the restaurant. The fire system has to work. Your egresses have to work. So everything, whether you're using the restaurant or not, you still have to meet those certain safety codes for building and fire.
Correct. So if, if we're in this room now, we're not familiar with it and we all just, we look for exits. We go that way. So everything's pre-designed and, and, you know, for building components and the concept of how we, how we exit a building. So we look at that as the fire protection, the sprinkler, the fire alarm, the emergency lighting, all those, all of those components are looked at when we go to do an inspection. And that's how we did our inspection. It was systematic from the, the front to the back, from the first floor to the basement. So.
Can I ask Dave a question?
Yes, please.
So in today, in yesterday's pictures, they talked about doors that were hard to open or kind of blocked, but they weren't, I don't know if they were blocked or they were physically hard to open. Is that a concern for the December 31st evening?
It is. So we had a door up front. They call it the fireplace room. It was very hard. What we do is we try to, when we're, we're looking at door, how easy it is to open a door, we, we, we gauge it has to open out with 30 pounds of pressure. So that's a, that's a state code that everyone has to abide by. These doors were difficult to open. There were double doors in the kitchen that had a set of doors on the inside that you had to open to get to the other ones. We asked them to remove them. That's kind of on our inspection list as well. So egress is probably, you know, the biggest thing. I mean, we look at the station nightclub, they, they couldn't get out, right? So that's what we look at as we look at egress. And that's important to us in notification. I can't, I would like to say though, that they had a fire alarm inspection report recently that, that came back, you know, that it was a good report. The sprinkler report came back with deficiencies on the report, but what the deficiencies were, were some of the parts of the system are required to be inspected every five years. The stand pipes and hose connections are three years. And then there were four heads in the, in the kitchen that had grease on them that they couldn't even tell. So we, we spoke to them. We, we, we usually, when we get deficiencies of that nature of, you know, overdue for the five year and three year, we do give people time because that is a, it's a costly thing. Sometimes it's a surprise to get it on your report as well. So we have a lot of reports that come in that way and we work with people. We give them like 90 days to accomplish that inspection and get that done. A lot of the area had like missing ceiling tiles, discussion plates, which are these covers that cover the sprinkler head. And those don't seem like much, but those hold, those hold the hot gases into the room and don't let them escape. It gives the sprinkler head time to heat up, to activate. So they're an important component of the sprinkler system. So we, when we walked through, there was like the water and stuff like that. I didn't get too involved, but that's board of health and building kind of handled that. But the key things with me are egress, emergency lights, exit lights, sprinkler testing, fire alarm testing. They did have their hoods done. They just had those recently cleaned, which is, which is a big deal. They had all their extinguishers serviced. So they did make a pretty good effort into the fire side of the inspection. So the fire side of the inspection, I think they made a pretty good attempt on, you know, trying to provide a safe place. So if we, if they fixed the doors, the egresses, you know, and some travel paths and the, they're already working on the ceiling tiles. And then they have to get in the sprinkler guy in for that. But I, all that stuff would have to be fixed before we were to be okay with. And those are simple, they, they really are. They're, they're simple things to be done. As far as New Year's Eve extension, you know, extending the hours and having a party there, probably wouldn't support it without a police and fire detail because of their last event they had. They were overcrowded. They had exits blocked, you know, the egresses blocked. They were running power cords in. The, they took ownership of that. They took full responsibility. I was talking to them. They were pretty apologetic for it. We fined them. Not sure, was that fine paid? I'm not sure if, your fire fine?
No, we didn't. Fire law, I fined. I think the, when the parking was last in that meeting, that was the only fire.
When that was? In November?
The Indian celebrity came that time. They parked car in a fire lane.
They just want to know if.
Yeah, that time, one of us was functioning and somebody parked the car in a fire line.
Yeah, there were several events.
And as soon as we noticed, we told him to move out those things.
We'll, we'll double check with Marie when she comes up about.
So I would suggest that we verify, which I'll verify, that we, if they do that, that we have the proper crowd managers. They didn't have the proper crowd managers in place at the time for the amount of occupants they had. So I think if this, if, if the board does allow this event and the extension or whatever, I think that the, the police and fire coordination with, with the owner. I think that the, the police and fire coordination with, with the owner is, is, is going to be critical.
We are ready to.
Uh, any questions from Deputy Chief?
So it sounds like from a fire perspective, just to recap, just like we just did with Matt, with some small fixes, you are okay with them holding events? You know, obviously New Year's Eve is in what, we're not, not even, not even 10 days.
Yeah.
But we're okay with an event still happening?
If, yeah, they, they, there's several items that must be completed and they were made aware of that, the ceiling tiles, the, the sprinkler covers, the doors have to be fixed, the emergency, two emergency lights, uh, uh, excuse me, one emergency light, two exit lights. So they, they do have a pretty good laundry list of items they have to take care of, but if they're done, if they, if those get done, um, I'm confident the pla, it would be safe. I think the public would be safe in there. However, again, not knowing the management, I mean, knowing the management style that took place last time, we would require a fire detail to be present.
And who would be in charge of this event? Would this be you? Would this be this new management company? You mentioned.
Both people will be there.
Both people, we will be stay over there.
Give away the place and once they start their duty, we will see and we will stay with them and after then.
But for, for the New Year's Eve, who's running it?
New management people is running.
New management gonna be.
And we going to be over there with them.
Believe it's like they're made in. People are running it who aren't here.
Yeah.
In 10, in nine days.
I believe that they're going to be working together as like a.
Yeah.
Initial sort of see how it goes. So they're, they are the ones with their name on the license who are running it and they're going to be essentially.
It's running by us, but we are bringing to them. So we want to make sure that they are able to run those things for us.
And who's selling the tickets to the event?
That we will go on under our name.
Right now on a hook because we are over here.
As a first year, you are, they can handle.
Okay, it's still them.
It's still them, but they're basically trying to see what's happening with this other company, if they're going to move forward or not. And this is the first event that they're saying, hey, why don't you come and work with us?
Okay, I wasn't sure if the other companies like, like renting the space and selling the tickets or, okay.
No, 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 no.
Okay, thank you for that.
They have to go with their own license.
It's all, they are the ones running it and just seeing how, how this potentially could work in the future, whether or not it's going to be a working operation with them or not.
We also have to decide, we want to give it to them or not. We want to see that operation, how they're doing that.
And their local experienced people or?
They have been long enough in the market.
Excuse me?
They are in, long enough in that kind of business, the management company.
Banquet?
Yeah.
Business.
Well, there lies a hu, huge problem. You know, we're hearing about it now and we know nothing about them.
Right.
Now for 10 days or.
Well, if they were, let's put it this way, if they were to say hire waiters, waitresses and staff, essentially it's the same thing. These are, everything is under their current license, they're the ones managing it and they're essentially saying to these people who are, they're thinking of working within the future, why don't you come and help us with this event right now and we're going to see how things go. I think that's really what it is.
They're going to bring in Bart, like we're concerned about the alcohol and the safety. So.
That's all on them.
That's all them. So your tips certification right now?
Yes, we are.
Everything's them.
Who, it's not, it's, as of today, it's up to date?
It's up to date. If you need the copy, I can drop it tomorrow over here.
We recently did the whole training camp there.
We can drop it tomorrow for you over here.
We have all.
All, all bartenders are certified.
Even service are also bartended certified.
I have just one other thing to add that.
No. Go ahead.
So we've requested that we get a determination on the occupancy load of what that building holds for each room. So when they have an event, we, we truly know, we can identify how many people are supposed to be in that event. And that, that should, that's on the owners to provide that. So we don't know what the occupancy is. So they're going to have to have an architect or some, or, or an engineer determine how many people can be in a hundred by a hundred area with this many tables and this many chairs, so we can get an accurate occupancy before we allow them to have a party for a thousand people.
So you want that by the first also?
We want, I believe Scott.
Well, Scott's coming up next.
Yeah, Scott has asked for that and that is, um, that's, that's, that's kind of, before they start selling tickets, they have to know how many, how many people it holds.
What roughly do we, like if we guessed, what do we think the occupancy is there? Oh, you're going to get, sorry, okay.
So.
Thanks, Deputy Chief.
So can I just?
Dave, I have one question. Dave, before you jump down.
Sure.
So I know you said there's a, um, a list of easy fixes.
Yeah.
So is it possible, I know we're not, we're not meeting before, before New Year's, but is it possible that somebody, whether it's, so I'm guessing you because a lot of the stuff you said, it, it, those are safety issues. Here, here's what I, I have the hard point with, I think Leah kind of mentioned safety. You know, you meant the station firehouse, okay? So the last thing I want to do is be sitting here giving okay to something that could possibly cause a tragedy, not that anybody would. So is it possible that before this event takes place, or maybe not right before or another, you know, so how many days do we have before?
Nine.
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 So that somebody gives another peek in there to see that the, the mains, exit, you know, exit doors and.
Nine peaks and.
Yeah, Scott's shaking his head.
Oh, okay, okay. So that's going to be, that's a combination Scott and, and Dave.
Yeah, we would do a reinspection before we approved anything. So we would, we would verify that the violations were corrected.
Yeah.
Right.
So I've, I've been in touch with their son, his son Sonny and, um, Sonny is confident that he's going to have everything done soon.
But he's out of the country. He's not even here.
He's out of the country, but they have a staff that he said they has working on it. But, um, you know, that's, we would never allow an event to take place if we didn't feel that it was going to be a safe, a safe environment. We take that pretty serious for all of our liquor establishments.
Someone else may address this, but is it going to be entertainment? Describe the entertainment or any pyrotechnics?
It's a New Year party, my friend.
There'll be no pyro, there's no pyrotechnics, no.
There you go.
No pyrotechnics. No fireworks.
Good question, Dennis. I like that one.
Live music or DJ?
Well.
It's a DJ.
DJ, DJ, not live music.
Okay, so the third one I think is safety. So can we talk?
I said no.
Building safety next?
Absolutely. Scott's just waiting to hear.
Yeah, all right. So we talked water, hell, fire, now, now building safety.
So to be clear, this event cannot occur without fire and building inspecting and signing off on it, just to make crystal clear.
And, and, and for the health.
And is there any other events between now and New Year's Eve? I know you've asked us for the extension, okay.
Good evening, Scott Shippey, building commissioner. Um, they actually stole my thunder. Um, yes, um, I've, we've been trying to work with them. Um, there are some minor things and some major things that need to be done, um, like Deputy Larissy, um, attest to, we, we do an inspection on the entire building, no matter if it's going to be occupied or not. I mean, it's not just for the public safety, it's for the, um, first responders going into that building. Their lives are essential too. Um, so we have to make sure the entire building is safe for them to go and do their operations safely. Um, like Matt alluded to, um, there's water damage coming from the roof that are buckling the floors, those, those are tripping hazards. When you get that place filled with smoke, these folks can't see that. They're going to trip, they're going to fall, they can hurt themselves and injure themselves. And when you do that in a fire, it, it could be deadly. Um, not saying it is deadly, but, um, I agree with both of them and I would not be comfortable extending the hours for that New Year's. But I would be comfortable if they fix all those issues that we have in our reports and they have a detail from fire for that night. So, and that's all I have to add, I mean.
How about the buckling floor? That was one for me.
That's major. I mean, that, that's a tripping hazard.
Is that fixable?
In 12 days?
Yes and no. I mean, it, it depends on what the floor is. If it's laminate floor, yes, they can cut it out and replace it with laminate. The roof is a major thing because now that's, um, been, who long knows how long that's been leaking? Is the, um, structural integrity compromised? We don't know. I mean, they said that that hap, that's been there forever. Well, you bought the property, you own the property, you inherit that. So you, you are, you are authorized, I mean, you have to maintain that building. You maintain everything on that building. You bought the, the hazards, basically. So, and we just got to get it corrected. I mean, we're willing to work with them. I mean, we don't want to put people out of business. That's not our job. Our biggest job is public safety. I mean, and that goes for the public and it goes for the first responders going into that building. I'm a retired firefighter. I know what it's like going in there and it's not fun. But they got to do a job and we have to make sure they're safe doing that job.
Questions for Scott?
Yeah, um, Scott, I, I mean, like, like Leah, the buckling floor, as I looked at those photos, you know, um, you know, I work in this business, I'm a server. I see water on floors. Listen, I've taken a fall. It doesn't take much, a, a couple of drops, someone's walking with a drink, you know, drop. Now you add leaks and water. Uh, to me, that's a huge safety hazard. So I would, I would obviously hope that, um, that anything leaking is.
You got to fix the leak first and then you can fix the interior.
Yeah.
Um, maybe they can do a temporary patch, fine. I mean, you can do roofs in the winter, it's been done. Um, so not being able to do it in the winter is not a visible excuse. I mean, roofers work throughout unless it's blizzard out or yesterday. So, um, unfortunately.
Things are leaking there, what did, what did yesterday cause up there?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to, um, do, do the site visit yesterday. Um, my inspect, my assistant did, um, but he's very thorough as well. And he, he, he did a good report and basically the same thing. And I would not feel comfortable unless we do a joint inspection with, with the fire department prior to this New Year's event. And I would stand on that.
Can we hear from police too? Uh, I want to hear about the parking especially.
And one other thing, um, I've been asking for that occupancy load calculation for a while now and I have not gotten it. There's some rumblings out there that it's 450 per, per room, but I need exact numbers per room so these folks can know who's in that, how many can occupy that room at one time. Because that's based on my occupancy load and my CI. Cause they'll know what, how many people are in that room. If it's a thousand people and only 400 people are supposed to be in there, there's a problem. You've got Coconut Grove again.
And do we have any occupancy? I mean, as far as I, you know, I've.
I think it was 2,500.
The footprint hasn't changed that much. It's been the same, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so we must have some sort of.
Well, they have done.
But that's with the restaurant or without the restaurant? Cause that's a big restaurant.
I think it was with the restaurant. I'd have to go over the records, um, but also some work has been done inside without permits and some interior walls, partition walls have been put up, some of them been corrected, some of them haven't, um, without permits. So those are some issues that we can take care of later. But the, the report pretty spells out pretty much what, what needs to be taken care of now. I mean, just to make the place safe.
Scott, do, do you set the occupancy?
I do not set the occupancy. That is, but architect goes in there and does a design calculation per the building code.
Then present, presented to you.
And then they give it to me and I verify it.
Give it a thumbs up, okay.
Yes.
We already contacted the architect. He already came, he took the measurements and everything. We already started to work.
Same paper we, we tried to.
And when's it due back?
We tried to get from the previous owner, but they, they have just a pencil work like this much, this much, this by this square feet. So we call architect, architect came there, architect took the measurement and pictures and now he gonna send us the information.
When's he sending it?
I have to check with them tomorrow.
Hopefully soon.
Yeah.
Hopefully before that New Year's.
Is that due by New Year's?
I would, I.
Soon, my friend, I want it for tomorrow. So that way we don't, we want to do business.
If I'm going to be direct, because I've been on the board for a while and, you know, when we were issuing this last year, we don't seem to get your attention until we get to this point. So, you know, just like Scott says, he's been asking for this for a while, it's great and it's really appreciated, you came to pay the taxes today, but until we get to this point, we can't get your attention. So that's kind of why we're, we're, where we are today and.
We are a businessman, we want to do the business, we are ready to do everything.
So we went there. And I think the previous owner secretary contacted you, right?
She ca, she came in, she gave me a verbal.
She said, this is the thing.
The, the previous owner passed away, but.
Yeah, soon.
The manager, the manager came in and gave me a verbal. That verbal's not good enough. I need a stamp.
Bottom line, you owned it for seven years.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Uh, yeah, what, Chief Grace?
And, you know, while Chief Grace is coming up, for some of us that have been in town for a long time too, just, you know, I've been there in that parking lot, like, like new large scale events are nothing new to this building. We all agree, right? Like for us that have been around for a while, I can see Mike, you know, I've been there and seen the parking lot completely full before, weddings, there used to be a nightclub, restaurant. What's different now? I'm curious. And why is it not working in the parking lot, safety wise versus before with these large scale events?
So I'll start with that answer. Mike Grace, the police chief. Um, historically, up at, if we go back to Funway and Dimitri owned the building, what we had up there was people or owners and staff who worked the restaurant and large venue business. That was their bread and butter. Um, every aspect of the operation included parking, attendance for coming in and for coming out, ensuring that we had people in the parking lot, telling people how to park, where to park. And so that way it wasn't, um, a problem until it was a problem. Um, inside, they had assigned staff, whether it be at the doors, they know, crowd management. Inside, they had assigned staff, whether it be at the doors, they know, crowd management, it's a science. The bartender, the owner, can't be doing all of that, and it's a skill. And right now, we're challenged, as we see collectively from all the department heads, we have a lot of, lot of small issues that have now come to the forefront. And what's being presented is that we have an operation that collectively, I don't think we've seen any establishment with a liquor license in Foxborough with this many problems. I will say, though, to be, the liquor issues or liquor violations are not there. We're not having crimes being committed in the parking lot, we're not getting 94Js from the state for OUIs. But we're showing that we're on the cusp of having a problem. We, we really are, because we're not prepared. You're, we're not being, you're not presenting to the town, or at least to me and my staff, that on event day, that all of the Is are dotted, the Ts are crossed, and we're gonna have a smooth operation. If you would like, we have a couple historical things, and I, and I would like to have Attorney Costello also address that if there are violations within the town codes, that trickles over to a liquor violation. So, that, that should be noted, so if the fire department cites an owner for overcrowding, that triggers a liquor violation of the liquor license. And as we see with the different departments here, we have a pile of violations that are pending right now. If we go back to June of this year, I think it came to the forefront, where we had a, an event where the Foxborough Police showed up at like 2:00 in the morning, and it was rather shocking to see that the parking lot was packed, there was people everywhere, mutual aid was needed from Walpole to assist with trying to remove people and have them leave. That prompted an immediate meeting between Lieutenant Burns and Deputy Chief Noonan with ownership to, one, address some of the issues. One of the issues are, under our regulation, there are mandatory notifications that if you're going to have large events over a certain amount of numbers, especially in the S1 district, you need to be notified in the police department within so many hours. None of that was happening. That communication is now much improved, but we're still getting calls for late-night noise issues in the parking lot, people not leaving. And it's not necessarily the owner's fault that the people who went to an event just don't want to leave the parking lot, but it starts to paint a picture that the operation, the expectations of the guests coming in are unfamiliar with how it's gonna operate. And when you come in and when you leave, even Patriot Place that we run every single weekend with, you know, up to 3,000 attendees, that lot's gone by 2:00, and all of that responsibility is on the owner. The police department and not the parking team, we're not the ID checkers, we're there to enforce the law and support the staff, but the staff haven't been there. They're just not running it the way that a operation of that capacity should be doing it. Or they're not well-versed in how to identify some of the shortcomings to prevent some of the problems. So, it is a concern as we move forward, I think any of us sitting in this room or sitting at home would say, how are we allowing this to operate? If every business in Foxborough had these problems, we would be in trouble. So I think that's a question for the board and for council to decide. The neighbors have some complaints, but some of them, before 11:00, though they believe that it could be too loud, that's sometimes unfortunate, because they are but commercial property where that business is allowed to operate. But once we hit the 2:00 mark and the events have closed, and the people aren't leaving, and the cars are loud, when we can't move these cars out, we get calls for service. We've had a couple of those, and as Deputy Chief Laracy identified, the incident which prompted the overcapacity, that obviously is quite concerning. And overcapacity should never happen. Within that event that occurred, we had parking at every other lot in the area, up and down Route 1, I'm quite sure there was no mutual agreements with any of the property owners. So if it's a ticketed event, there should be people counting people coming in, knowing what the head count is, and then you shut the parking lot down. It happened many times at Funway. Christine is, obviously, they had planned events, they knew guests, they had head counts, they knew who was coming, they know what time people were leaving, it's, it's, there's systems. Systems save you, and we're just not seeing that.
And Chief Grace, would you say that that would be a suggestion that they were much over head count, whereas we hadn't seen that in the past, that the parking was that much of an issue? That it had to overflow like that, or had it?
Well, absolutely, if you have, you don't have enough parking spots to put everybody-
So then, you're probably overcrowded.
Um, I, well, I think the fire department responded upon, and they, they did their investigation, photographed some of the egress issues as well as the capacity issue. But that's, that's, so it's not all bad, the owners are trying. I, I, they're very receptive, we just seem like, we're kind of like a day late and a dollar short.
Do you know-
And I'm not implying about the taxes.
Do you know, or maybe the owners know, how many parking spots are there in that parking lot? Does anybody, or Scott might know, I, I don't know, how many spots are in the parking lot? We should know.
I have to look at the plan.
Yeah.
But the plan should, the plan, parking lot should be enough parking spaces to accommodate that building.
But that building's pretty old, and you never know with an old site plan, what it, you know, it's not like- Well, no, I, what I was wondering is like, was it a type of event that people are coming by themselves, so there's one car for everybody, are they coming three or four at a time? Like, I know what you're saying, most of the time, if, say, say it was a wedding there, wedding reception, you know, maybe Doc goes as my date, it's two of us and we're in one car. Or maybe the board, the board decides to go all together, you know, so that's why I was saying it, like, to determine how many, how many people were there by the cars, or how many spots you should have by your capacity, all depends on how people show up, you know?
True, but if you're running a business and you have a parking lot, and that's your parking lot, when you fill it, you're done.
Yeah.
So, if you don't know that if it's an open invitation, you gotta shut the doors.
And if you have no one in the parking lot, you don't really even know what's going on. Yeah.
Yes.
Right?
That's right.
You're saying there's no one in the parking lot to kind of know what's going on.
No attendant.
No attendant to, to know.
Yeah, well, yes, otherwise you end up with potential like, you know, in a typical parking lot, you go up, you have a loop, well, no more spots, let me take that last loop, well, now you just blocked everybody. And I, you know, I don't want to be, you know, the end of the world.
Or even if somebody's there, you, you know how many spots you have, and e- even if you're not counting exactly one car, two cars, 500 cars, in your, in your head, if somebody is trained to, that's what they're, they're to do, they should be able to somewhat say, we're getting close to being-
Your, your business model should know that you only can accept so many cars. And you have to, you can't sell unlimited tickets if you don't have parking. And, so you're gonna have, that's all part of advertisement and selling about ride shares and discounts to make sure people, more people come, you know, drop-offs, those are all, it's all, it's a whole business. It isn't just, let's, let's wing it and see what happens. And I think that's where the board has to look at it.
And Chief, so, obviously, you said you would, you would like to have a police detail, right? Or maybe, maybe Dave Laracy said it, that, about having a police detail there. So, as far as the people mingling afterwards, would the police detail be, does that fall under, under that of saying, come on, guys, let's move it on out? Or they, or they need to, they need to have, as maybe as people are exiting, they have someone saying, thank you for coming to our event, please, you know, no, no lingering in the parking lot, please, once you get to your cars, can you please, you know, exit?
So I'm not asking for a detail at 10:00 to 2:00 in the morning, because I don't even know if I can fill it. But-
Okay.
Under the, the bylaw, they may be required if we have a history of problems. The parking issue and the moving of the cars, that's on the property owner. The police officers are not moving cars, their staff have to be in place, they have to be moving the cars, we'll assist if there's a car accident, and we'll keep the peace, but we support staff. They're obligated to manage all of those issues, and we support them in that. And it's very effective, it's a tiered system.
Are they required to have a detail at any occupancy? Because if I remember going way back in the day, like, there would be a detail on site.
Well, it depends, under the S1 district, after 400 people-
They are required.
The police chief makes that determination.
Okay, okay.
So I, depending on the event, in the S1 district, I determine, depends on, you know, if it's a fundraiser and it's a nonprofit mom's club, at, you know, at 4:00 in the afternoon, and, you know, and they're serving alcohol, I, I can identify that crowd and say, you know, I don't have a concern here.
But have they reached out to you for this event that they're gonna have in 12 days to let you know they're gonna be over 400, and do you need a detail?
Um, I'm not sure if they've talked to the deputy, I believe they've been talking with-
Detailing, plus on a top of that, we put in our own people to make it exit in the end.
Parking team also, we have, always we ask for detailing, if they are not available, we call the private detailing people.
The private security.
And till sometime, people don't want to understand and don't want to listen, they can-
So it was required, we identified a situation, but because of the, the back taxes, we actually made them prepay the detail, because I'm obligated to make sure I collect all of the detail that gets billed out, and I didn't want to be stuck with a bill that wasn't paid.
How many banquets or events of this size have the two of you managed?
How many halls? It's a six of them.
Six.
We opened the whole thing.
No, I mean, in terms of, you know, running these large events and banquets is very different than managing a restaurant. So I'm just saying, do you have the expertise to manage big events like this?
Myself, I used to own the Daisy and Bass Western. Daisy in New Bedford, 305, 300 Hathaway Road, I used to own that, with the banquet, restaurant, everything. And same thing, I used to own the Bass Western in Newport, Rhode Island, next to the Plymouth Golf Course.
Related to your liquor license too, are you responsible for your North Attleboro restaurant, or is that someone else?
No, that was something else.
Someone else is on that liquor license?
Yes.
So you're only focused on-
Because by ABC law, we cannot have that, the one name for so many licenses.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Can I ask, just because he brought up, how big was your banquet space in those hotels? Because banquet space and, even though you say you own that, it can be 300 people, this is-
There was a 700.
700.
Yeah.
So this is three times plus what you've managed before, that, that's a big difference.
My son did a crowd management course, we have a certificate for that also.
Marie? Yeah, oh, Marie, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Paula then?
Was Pat saying something too? I thought I heard something. You gotta-
Oh, I've got a microphone.
The issues with the taxes have been taken care of.
Who are you?
I'm Paula, treasurer collector. Maloney. The taxes have been taken care of, but like Paige said, they weren't bank checks, so... I mean, you have to wait a certain amount of time to make sure everything clears, but as far as today, they are up to date.
On everything back?
Everything.
Everything?
Yes.
Real estate, personal, water, everybody, everybody, everybody's good, money wise?
Because the water's kind of tricky, but we just leaned that to the real estate, which then recommitted it, so it's not due to February, even though it's backwater.
Okay.
Because we do that every year.
Walpole, Silver, Bell also, parts over there also.
And, and had the $7,500 for the back payment been up to date, or had that fallen behind? I'm just trying to get the difference between, so there was a payment plan, if I remember, last year, that was just to catch them up on back taxes, $7,500 a month, plus still owed, you know, whatever came new. Had that been on track, Paula? That had not been?
They, they were making payments every month, you know, pretty regular. As far as the second part of the agreement, which was keeping up with current bills, that wasn't happening.
But the $7,500 was paid every month on time?
Not this year, but the, the first year we did it.
Okay.
Like Glockper.
Because we weren't gonna, just for everyone, if you're new to the board, we weren't gonna issue the license at that time, because there was so much tax, and that was how we ended up coming to an agreement to move forward, if that was paid, but it sounds like that was only paid for a year, and then that stopped getting paid as well. Did, did the payments of the year catch them up though, so were they, that $7,500, did they, that took here what they owed, but then they started falling behind? It was a little, it was- Yeah. They were gonna owe that for a long time, it wasn't just a year to get them caught up.
Right.
Well, a year is 12 months, I, I believe they, they were around in the 90,000, right, 90 to 100,000?
I don't recall, um...
When we said, when we said up the payment.
The way we looked at the plan, if they had kept current with the current bills, as well as paying that $7,500, they would have been caught up, we wouldn't have taken them into tax title.
Okay, okay, no, that was my question though, so basically, they, they were paying the back taxes, but while doing that, they let the current year's taxes fall behind.
Right.
But they're all caught up now.
They're all caught up now, as long as everything goes through the bank, yes.
And then on February 1st, there'll be another real estate tax and water bill due. So we'll know better then whether things stay on track, correct?
Correct.
Now on what we are paying every month to month, so we don't want to create any more. Because before it was two and happy as almost closed, so we don't have any revenue, and that time, it was a different issue because of the COVID and that all thing, so that is overlap and overlap and interest and everything comes out too much. But now, every month, like $10,000 we deposit, matter should not be created again.
COVID really killed us.
We will pay every month.
Lot of restaurants, lot of restaurants. Any further questions for?
You know, the other thing is, I'm very uncomfortable that, I'm not trying to put words in Chief Grace's mouth, but it doesn't appear that you're gonna have a large police presence there to kind of monitor what's going on there. Have you considered private security?
I think they did say they have to go to private security and they can't get the detail filled.
Not one time. We, lately, whatever events we have, we always have the private security, and we ask for the police department to, if they are able to make it, they also come over there. And we paid the bills also for those things.
I mean, if there was really a, a good number of private security in the absence of the police being there, I'd feel a lot more comfortable.
We really, we really want to put it over there, because the parking nuisance over there, that's another reason. So at least they can control those things.
Right.
It is a public hearing, do you want to take any, see if there's any public comment?
Yeah. Any from, from the public?
Just to put it clarifying, the, um, the tax bill alone is gonna be 40,000 each quarter, so at least 40,000 each quarter. So, I mean, it's, it's another large chunk, to caution you all.
In February.
February and May.
And what was due as of this morning when we woke up, before we had a payment?
About 240,000.
Two, so 240,000 was essentially paid today. And that was how much of back and how much of current year? Just to put it into perspective, it just helps me realize how far behind-
50,000 was for the current year, the rest of it all was old.
And the $7,500 was not being paid, it was only being paid the first year?
They, they were making payments intermittently, yes.
Well, because this paper says as of today, which, which then, then they gave you a check, but this says as of today, they owed 103,000, not two, the 240 something, I, I, that's why I was a little confused. I was looking back at the numbers, it was going back at one point, but is this paper correct? That was from Matt, Paige, and Marie, as of today, 9:47 this morning, they owed 103,000, $9.
Oh, just for the taxes, yeah, just for the straight taxes, not the interest, not the personal-
Oh, that, oh, that, okay.
Yeah, they owed personal property and, and other things.
Okay, so this, okay, that's what I, I was looking at the other numbers, and they look so high, then this one was like 100, okay, all right.
So I think just from the staff perspective, you know, again, we are business-friendly, you know, I'm big into economic development, but it feels like, to Leah's point, you know, it's been a couple years, I get it, COVID, but it just feels like, you know, the fact that they were able to pay it today, I mean, everything is at the 11th hour, and everything, you know, is a chase, and there's been a tremendous amount of staff time, tremendous amount of concern we have, you know, liability-wise, you know, none of us want to be involved in, in allowing something to happen that could go wrong, but, so it's just a, a lack of comfort and assurance, and just, they're, you know, yes, they've gotten it done today, and we're tiptoeing right up to the, the precipice here, but it's, you know, it's just a lot for us to, to feel comfortable right now, and we, there's no track record to feel comfortable that this is going to continue to stay on track, unless we chase. Because I think a year ago, you went through some of this. So, again, it's, it's difficult, and I, I want them to succeed, but on the other hand, it's, it's just been a demonstrated years of lack of performance, and then, yeah, so I'll leave it at that.
Can I say something, it's so funny, because I, I was gonna ask Doc if it's okay if I kind of address them in something similar. I say this with complete respect, I've worked in this type of business, not at your level, but as, you know, as a server, but I, I, I see everything, whether, whether you're the owner, you're the manager, you know, I understand the business, I say this with all due respect. I would say that you guys really need to decide if this is the business you want to be in. You know, I mean, this seems like a much bigger scale than, that's why I asked about your other properties. Why, and why I say that is because I'm only speaking for myself, but if this circles back around again-
We don't want to make it the circle.
Exactly, but, but it did circle back around once.
Yes.
And I'm gonna tell you, when the, when the taxes came in, I had a, a lot of compassion for you, mostly, I believe the whole board did, but I specifically said, I know what it's like to work in a business that is so impacted by COVID, especially that you weren't allowed to have functions. And, and for that matter, you know, the, I was lucky, the restaurant I worked in did a lot of takeout.
We learn by our mistake, we don't want to repeat that mistake again there.
Okay, so, but basically- Okay, let me finish. So my point is, like I said, this is with all, all respect for you, and, and like Paige said, this community, we're not about businesses failing, we want you to succeed. But I do want you to know, for myself, if any of this circles back around, I will, I'll be a flat no in, in, in issuing license, that's my, my, just my opinion. So you do need, I feel like, and I, I think the whole board, because I, I know how well this board works, I think you need to know that we take this so seriously, and the safety aspect of this, and the last thing I ever want is for there to be a tragedy, and then someone to circle back around to why this board gave you another shot. So for me, i- i- if in fact we vote and, and this goes through, for me, this will be the last shot. Because I, I won't be able to do it again. So, so that's, you know, and I say that with respect, I truly do.
They're giving it one more chance to us, I appreciate for that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We are moving forward, and we have some more plan for the back land, which is not giving us any revenue, so we have a plan to go with the smaller companies, so they're gonna come to see for that, so then we can generate extra revenue from there also.
And I, I know we're gonna look at the after-hours after, but, you know, if I'm just being honest, I echo everything Stephanie said about, you know, we want to see every business succeed. I think that's why, I've been on this board, this is going on my sixth year, and I think every year, we talk about this, and it's kind of the same thing every year, so it's not, you know, my first time, it's first time maybe reviewing it at this level, but it's kind of the same story every year. And quite frankly, I found it a little tone-deaf and almost offensive to come to the board and ask for liquor service until 2:00 AM to enhance the experience of those that are here. Not only for this board, but everyone that's sitting out here, you know, you don't have your house in order. So to come and ask this board to let you stay open later with everything that you have going on, makes me question, sir, if you understand the severity of what's going on and the business that you're in. You know, the, the timing, the request, the way it's known, you know, you're looking forward to the positive response, it, 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 um... Again, it just, it just doesn't sit with me that, that you guys get where we're at right now with everything that's just been laid out, to kind of come to us with that request.
Trust me, to sitting over here today in front of you guys- Trust me, to sitting over here today in front of you guys, we learn a lot. And we don't want to create that mistake again.
We wasted one hour for, we already sold that property. We was getting good money and town didn't allow it. It's a big, big setback for us, that thing, because waiting and that all thing, you have to cover one year in advance. So we stopped before and after five, six month meeting here, then we have to back up everything. Otherwise, it was a.
Right, but that, I understand that's very unfortunate. But to come and ask us to stay open later and serve more alcohol and have everyone in here and have everyone in the parking lots later, understand, you know, to us, it's just, it's like a little bit of a head scratcher to me.
So I think, coming around sort of full circle, if I can just maybe summarize maybe what our options are and certainly Attorney Costello can weigh in. You know, I'm personally looking at this at two different ways. One, for the New Year's Eve party, and two, going forward. Going forward, you got a new plan? I'd like to see the plan.
Sure.
I, go ahead. Sorry. You know, I'm gonna lose my train of thought.
I know.
Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health, I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
I just wanted to remind the board, as of, just remember when you make this motion vote that as of January 1st, they no longer have a Board of Health permit.
Okay, thank you.
Never in your mind.
At 12:01, at 12:01 AM, so it kind of.
Oh, at 12:01 AM?
2024.
Yeah, 2024.
2024.
Until all violations have been corrected, you know, then they can get it back. But that's upon all violations being corrected and going in front of the Board of Health and them allowing them the permit back. So just for your knowledge.
Yeah, and I mean, going forward, I'd like to see the business plan with the partnership. As for, and again, my opinion, as for the 31st, there's a lot of mitigation that has to be done before, you know, everybody signs off. I'm comfortable with the 31st with a lot of caveats. And that's, you know, Deputy Chief signs off, you know, before the event. You know, Scott signs off, Matt signs off. That all, everything that needs to be fixed, needs to be fixed, including, you know, an occupancy permit and things are clean and differentiation between the parts of the building for that event. And that doors are managed and lights are put where exit's supposed to be. So I mean, we can come up with a list of things that need to be done, you know, before the 31st. As for going forward, my thought is probably putting it on hold until we have a plan, until they go through Board of Health. I don't know if I'd allow part two of what we're doing tonight, going beyond, especially with, it's gonna be shut down by 12:00 anyway. That's sort of where I'm at. Certainly would love to hear.
Can I, can I add one more thing to yours too? And out of respect to our hardworking staff, it's not that you're signed off on by, you know, 9:00 AM on the 31st, it's a Sunday. Like, for me, this would be that you have all your sign offs by, you know, the Friday before, so that this doesn't turn into a weekend fire drill, you know, for the people that are out here. So it's really, you know, kind of getting, getting down to the wire.
I don't know how you hold an event for New Year's Eve that you're selling tickets to, if you're not able to sell tickets before the Friday, two days or whatever ahead of New Year's Eve, that the timing of that just sounds like unworkable.
Yeah, you're not wrong.
Yeah, I think that would be their decision then if they move forward with the event.
Paige, can just get a little clarification? You might know, I hate to pull Matt all the way back up here again, but when you say 12 o'clock, okay, is that people out of the building at 12 o'clock? Or does that mean like liquor service and food service stop at 12 o'clock?
Chief.
Okay.
I want to actually back up a little bit and let Attorney Costello. If they, at 12 o'clock, if the Board of Health doesn't offer a permit, you can't have a liquor license.
Okay. You need food with drink.
You have no liquor license at 12 o'clock. So moving forward, there is no liquor license. They don't, they can't use it, they have it, it hasn't been revoked. There's a presumption that they retain it. But until the Board of Health signs off, they can't operate alcohol.
And then maybe back to Pat. So does that mean at 12 o'clock, people have got to be out? People cannot have a drink, liquor license cannot have a drink in hand? Can we get?
Well, the license goes till 11:00 now anyway, right?
Well, no, the, we're talking about the Board of Health license.
No, no, but the liquor license, the general liquor license goes till 11:00?
No, on the weekends, it's 1:00.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, so it would go till 12:00.
Till midnight, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I mean, we need to have clarification, like, does that mean at midnight, a drink cannot be in hand? Cannot sell a drink, like, you know?
We could, we could put another mitigation, stop serving alcohol at 11:00.
It's probably like a last call.
That's why I was just wondering, we want to be in compliance. If he doesn't have a liquor license after 12:00, we need to know what to pass on to him, to the establishment.
All right, you heard a lot, Pat.
Very, very interesting situation. The, the December 31st date imposes a lot of restrictions here. It's the end of the existing license period. As the chief noted, there's a presumption that the renewed license remains effective until and unless the board decides otherwise. So they would have the benefit of the liquor license. However, if they don't have appropriate approvals and permits from the Board of Health to offer food as of 12:01 AM, they can't serve liquor at that point in time, in my view. Because the two go hand in hand, they're required. So it being New Year's Eve, 12:00 is a very significant time. So it creates a very significant problem for the, for the property owner or the operator, in my perspective. But certainly nothing that the town has created. I think the boards expressed a clear willingness to work with these folks and to be quote unquote, "business friendly." Yet on the other hand, there are so many loose ends here right now, it's difficult to get a hold of things. And to your point, Mr. Chair, I think your approach is sound. Let's, let's look at the New Year's Eve party. Is, by the way, is that the only event that's scheduled between now and the end of the year? Are there other events as well?
The only event, right?
We don't have any other ones.
No, that's the only event.
All right, so that, that's the only event we have to focus on. And if, you know, the, the license holder has been given a list of tasks to accomplish prior to that event. I think he knows very clearly what they are. He knows what the expectations are. And as I believe Deputy Larissy noted earlier, I mean, if fire does not approve or does not indicate compliance with all applicable fire codes, and if the building commissioner does not indicate that the building is complying with all applicable building codes, they're not going to be able, they can shut the operation down then and there. They can issue a cease and desist order. So they would have independent authority to do that, notwithstanding the status of the license. But I think, from what I'm hearing, I would suggest that the board refrain from taking action with respect to the current year's license. By action, I mean suspension, revocation. And let that expire on its own as of midnight on 12:31. And then perhaps we could continue this hearing to a point at some, perhaps in mid-January, when the license holder has been given an opportunity to complete the significant tasks that have been addressed here tonight and come back to the board with an update. And I could perhaps even work with counsel in the interim to come up with a game plan for a presentation to the board. That would include certain conditions that the board could impose to the license going forward to address the issues that have been raised. I would, I would, I think the license may need to be amended to some degree if it's not a full restaurant operation as it was when it was initially issued. I could be wrong there, but we'll look at that issue. And, you know, I think the taxes being paid is a very significant step. And let's hope everything's okay there. I understand what folks are saying about concerns going forward, but we can't consider that at this point in time. The only thing our bylaw and the law allows us to consider is whether or not there presently a delinquency in taxes and charges owed to the town. There apparently does not appear to be. That's a major step forward as far as the license goes, in my view. So I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that we impose certain conditions here tonight on the license holder for the event on New Year's Eve. Obviously, the closing time will be addressed by the board pursuant to their request. But inspections will have to be done, certain repairs taken place in the interim period of time. And we'll leave it up to the inspectors, you know, as of the Friday prior to the, the New Year's Eve event to, to report, you know, to do their inspections and issue reports and see where it goes. But the renewal of the license for next year, I, it seems to me there are still a lot of open questions, a lot of answers that are gonna have to be had, and perhaps some conditions that will have to be imposed by the board on the license for 2024 to assure continued compliance with all of these requirements.
Pat, what's, what does that 12:00 license mean though? Like, at 12:00, no more, no more service? Do the people have to be out of the establishment? Can they still have a drink in hand between 12:00 and 1:00? What does that mean if it's gonna end at 12:00?
I believe that the license didn't have any specific terms or conditions appended to it, as I understand from what I read. But it would mean to me that service would have to shut down by midnight.
So they've served, but someone can continue to consume what they've gotten before 12:00?
That's correct. But, but there would have to be very strict monitoring of service. The bars would have to be shut down by midnight because the license, that's the closing hour under the license.
So Pat, just because I'm Clark and I have to do the motion, as far as the motion for the renewal, am I rejecting for now or am I continuing until date certain?
I would suggest that what we do is continue this hearing on the renewal to a date certain in January. And in the interim, the license will be deemed renewed under Chapter 138, Section 12A. There's a presumption that it continues on its present terms. But the board can obviously, when the hearing resumes, hear further testimony, discuss it further and impose whatever conditions it wants upon a renewed license at that point in time.
So would.
So we could, the motion tonight could be just to continue the hearing to a date certain.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll keep the wheels rolling in the interim.
And Matt said his meeting is January 22nd, which is a Monday. And our next meeting is January 30th. So although we meet on January 16th, that Board of Health meeting would not have happened yet, pending that the checks clear again, because that is a key piece to that. And then I would continue this public hearing to a date certain, January 30th.
Good.
Yes. That was exactly what I was going to ask.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes, that was exactly what I was gonna ask, to make sure that the meeting that you convene where this is heard again would be after my clients have an opportunity to present to the Board of Health. May I ask a question of Town Council? So if the interim, if in the interim, my client's license is to be, it's to be deemed renewed until that time, what does that mean in terms of this event on the 31st?
There are different licenses though, is the Board of Health license, which you will not have.
Not have.
And then in conjunction, ours cannot run without that piece.
But the building can still be open, that's what I just wanted to be sure. The, they are still able to be on the premises.
Meaning?
That, yes.
Them, not, they can't have any functions because there's no.
That night though, the people can still be there after 12:00? They just can't serve the food after 12:00?
Food or alcohol.
Correct, okay. Just wanted to be 100% clear. Which is on the first.
Till 1:00, right?
Till what?
They can be on the premises until 1:00 AM on the first. They just cannot serve the food or alcohol as of 12:00 midnight.
Correct.
And so would, would we, tonight, would we be making a motion to continue?
This hearing.
To continue about the 24 license and also make a motion whether we were gonna extend, which now we know we can't? Would we even make that motion because they've asked or?
Well, we'll make.
Well, we'll make that separately. But you, you told us how you can't have a successful, you know, you need to be open till 2:00 AM to have a successful event. So just, you know, you'll have to decide in your business model if a New Year's Eve event is worth it, given that you're gonna have to finish a lot earlier than you had even anticipated.
And I would just let your guests know that, you know, last call, was it quarter of 12? Not quarter of 1, so that.
I like that clarification you did. Before 12:00, have it been served, but he is holding the cup, it is a hand? That's a different story, but we close the bar, no more serving alcohol.
Exactly, exactly.
I like that clarification, very good.
Are we sure about that though, Pat? So if they get a beer at 10:00 of midnight, they can still be holding that beer at 12:20? I can go up and double fist up to the beer, up to the bar? I mean, that's, that is a point of clarification.
I don't know about double fist.
What the license does is permits the sale or dispensing of alcoholic beverages up until the deadline set forth in the license. And let me take, we can take a quick look at the license here.
And realizing we're putting you on the spot with some very specific unusual questions.
That's quite all right. Let me just see.
11:45 is our last call.
What is the closing time now, for all intents and purposes, for the event? All permits taken into account, what time do they shut down at this point?
So for particular, this one, 11:45 is our last call. After that, done.
You're just so, just so your bar, there'll be no service.
Yep.
And just, just remember, just because if people get aware of that, you know, you're allowed to walk away from the bar with two drinks, not 10 drinks.
The light will be shut off. No more bartender over there, they will start to clean up from over there.
You got it. Well, that's the state law too, you can't walk away.
Trust me there, we want to be in business.
You know, I would just, just add, you know, it's New Year's Eve, people have been drinking alcohol all night and you're gonna tell them quarter of 12:00, you know, you have to turn it off and we're gonna be exiting pretty soon. A security, a professional security component here is gonna be critical. Because you would, you could have an all out riot, you know, and I think you'd need to be in a place to manage it. I don't want to put Chief Grace on the spot, but maybe he could review the plan to make sure there's safety with a professional outside security firm. That would be.
2020 we hire, right, security?
Total, both parking and security.
Yeah, parking and those things, we hired 20 security.
20.
And all these things we're telling, we want you to be successful. That's why we're offering up at least our best knowledge. We want, we, we want you to continue doing business in Bar Square.
Appreciate for that, thank you.
Potentially no action on the current license pending check offs or approvals by the three different.
Yeah, we have to fix those things.
By Friday?
Yeah.
At 12:00?
Not Saturday or Sunday.
They will be not over there.
And I believe Deputy Larissy noted all of that.
They'd feel comfortable.
Yep, yeah.
Signing off on it.
I think they understand that if they're not, if the things are not fixed, then their event cannot go forward.
Correct.
And then the next thing will be the hearing before the board on the 23rd. And if the things are not fit, 22nd, I correct myself, thank you. And then the next thing would be regarding 2024. I think it's, you've made the point very clear that, you know, the 24th, if they, I'm sorry, they, for the 31st, it's midnight or nothing. And it's if they meet the conditions. You've been very clear about that and your officers have been very clear.
And there's no events with alcohol because you do not have a Board of Health permit until at least they, they sign off on 22nd. So with that, Pat, let me know after, did you have anything else, Pat, before I make the motion? I think you were saying something.
I, I just, I recall Deputy Larissy mentioning something about the possibility of a fire detail at the event on 31st. I'm not sure whether that's a condition. I'm not sure whether that's a condition we'd want to stick to.
Yeah, we would definitely require that.
A fire detail?
A fire detail, so it would be two firefighters would be present at the event. They'll arrive, we would require they'd arrive prior to the event starting so they can lock the property, verify that everything has, is what it was when we inspected it, and then they'll stay until the end of all the fire events are gone.
So from beginning to end?
Beginning.
Before beginning till after the end.
Yeah.
Prepaid, too, and probably like the police detail, I imagine you want that prepaid?
They need the detailing for the fire department, though.
Yeah, we already called last, last...
So, and Dave, Scott, and Matt, you guys are good with that Friday before New Year's, that Friday before Sunday, New Year's Eve? So they should get in touch with you a little bit. I know Friday usually is a half, maybe not for Dave, but a half-day for Town Hall. So maybe just make sure you reach out. Don't call them Friday morning and try to get them in on Friday. So just give them enough time to schedule when's a good time for them to get in and look at the property.
And one last thing, just obviously, Marie, make sure all the checks cleared.
How long, that 10, 10 business days typically, Paula? So we've got just...
That's going to be tight.
That's going to be tight, too, just even the checks clearing.
Yeah, it was the local bank, so I have to...
When we wrote the check, it's going to be definitely going to be clear.
It comes next day.
Otherwise, so we will never... We will be adding more violations.
We hope so.
Your bank is faster.
Part of the whole deal, part of the process.
All right, so with that, I'm going to move that we continue the public hearing until Tuesday, January 30th, 2024. And Pat, am I doing that for both the all-alcohol as well as the common vic license, or just the all-alcohol?
It would be both.
Okay, for both the common vic and the all-alcohol license?
January 30.
Till January 30th, but January 22nd for Board of Health?
7:05 p.m. as well.
Uh, do we have any?
I'll need to check, but I can let you know the exact time.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You've got a lot to do.
Thank you.
You've got a lot to do. And please send out an email, our three, let us know what's going on through Katie and Paige, please, because we're very curious.
The ball's in your court.
We don't have to vote on the extension.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, well, no, hold on a second, let's...
Oh, the extension, the extension. So we're, I'm obviously going to make a motion to move that the request from NRV Inc., DBA, all of them in Ambrosia premises located at Two Washington Street in Foxborough to have extended alcohol service until 2 a.m. on December 31st be rejected.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All ofs in favor? Because you guys have pretty down pat what's going on?
Yes.
And when you have to stop stuff.
Thank you to all of our departments that are here as well.
2 o'clock in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
You, too. We're a tad behind. Sorry, Paige. You're up. So that's the update on the special employee list. I, you know, I apologize, that's right.
What?
We could have taken you in the...
I was hoping.
Oh, that's on me.
You learned a lot tonight, though, right?
I did, that was very educational, thank you. Oh, that's a bummer. Paige Appolito, Human Resources Director. I am asking for your approval to add the part-time librarian for the schools to be on the special, be a special town employee, because we have part-time work available in the Foxborough Library, and this particular person was interested and come to find out that, you know, at six considers the town and the school same municipal agencies, so you can't have two positions. But if they are added to the list of special employees, then they can do that. And knowing how hard it is to hire people these days, it would be great if she was added, that position was added, and that this school librarian can work for your Foxborough Library also, part-time, both part-time positions.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Very straightforward, sorry, Paige. So the only other thing, too, do we want to just make an edit, if we're editing this, to change the Industrial Development Committee to...
Economic Development.
Yeah, just, while we have it open, maybe just that other one as well as part of the motion? So, motion to approve the updates to the special town employee list to include substitute librarians and update the name of the Economic Development Commission, Committee?
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, quick question. So this isn't, this isn't creating a new position for her to do both? It's just if they need to fill it?
They can fill this and work as...
Yeah, yeah. So, but when you say part-time, part-time work, you mean it's an existing...
This position, there is part-time substitutes at the schools, and we need the help also, part-time substitutes at the Foxborough Library.
Perfect, good enough for me. Unless they're on this list, they can only hold one position.
Correct.
This will allow them to hold more than one.
Perfect.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Paige, sorry. Huge bummer. Fire Department. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
All right, so what we've done for years is try to have a department update this time of the year for, just to catch up on what's going on and how they're doing, and fire department's up?
Oh, you know what, we're missing Deputy Chief Larassee.
He's coming back right now.
Is he coming back? Okay, all right. It's been a long 48 hours, so we'll try to make this as fast as possible.
Yeah, just for the record, I did...
You did.
Ask if he wanted to postpone because of what's been going on, but you're powering through.
I regretted that decision about quarter and a half, but...
It's not too late.
No, we'll blast through this. Everyone's all dressed up, they got their ties on, so I wanted to give you guys the updates. It's been a pretty busy 2023. A lot of exciting things happened in the fire department, and we're thrilled to be here, so. Just with regards to the last 48 hours, again, I just want to talk about the team. Everybody from Paige to Chris Gallagher's group, Chief Grace, and the facilities group, Tony Masally, I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but very collaborative, who's, I feel like, spoken to them more than my own family in the last 48 hours, so. But we're over the hump, we're getting there, I think we're less than 1,000 outages now, so hopefully, you know, the people get their power back very quickly. So, to start, in 2023, the first thing I want to talk about was the loss of our ladder truck. Our ladder truck was struck on Route 495 at a motor vehicle accident. A young woman who was intoxicated struck the vehicle. It's probably saved the lives of four firefighters and two state troopers working in a car accident. So we're very fortunate there. We have a nine-to-12 month estimate, we're in month eight, and there's really no end in sight with all the supply chain issues that we're having and everything else. She was subsequently arrested for DUI, but was not insured, so that'll be going through MYHA.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so. But again, we're just very fortunate that nobody was injured, including the occupant. One of the good things that came out, we were able to procure a used ladder truck that was in service in Illinois that was recently traded in. We used some funds from MYHA that were available, and we're able to combine that with some funds from our budget. This happened close to the end of the fiscal year, so we were able to work with Marie, and we were able to get this ladder truck at about a cost, I think about $10,000 to the town. So we used funds from MYHA and then used our own budget funds, and our mechanics went through it, we spent a few dollars getting it ready to go, and, you know, that's one of the benefits of our in-house maintenance program. We had our mechanic be able to put some money into it, and we're not without a lot of trucks, so the citizens have that. So it's kind of a blessing, as you can see, we've used it quite a bit in the last couple of weeks. Another milestone, we were able to work with Gillette Stadium and our partners, the Police Department, to have the stadium become recertified for the Safety Act under the Department of Homeland Security. This is a recognition of best practices. You know, the stadium's designated as a safe place and a haven to develop new technology and new methods as far as protection and, you know, large venue management, so that's, there was a feather in our cap. We each got a football from the stadium to commemorate the recertification as a thank you. And again, we spent a lot of time with these guys, they're all great guys and great partners. Kind of a different year in terms of response, we responded to some different things. One thing I've never really been a part of, we sent two engines, and Chief Buckley and myself went over to North Attleboro to help them with the flooding that they had. They had, one of their firefighters suffered a sudden cardiac arrest during this incident, which drew a lot of resources. And you can see this is a road culvert completely washed out, a lot of their roads were impassable. Our engine actually rescued a UPS driver from a truck who was stranded in the middle of a flooded-out roadway, so kind of a crazy night, you know. So just over there helping out, we had our annual awards and promotion ceremony on the upper right. You can see myself, so we recognized some of our individuals, celebrated some promotions. You can see, that's a picture of the pilots from the flyover at the Army-Navy game. We were able to meet all the pilots and, you know, Army airmen. They were fantastic to work with, state police partners, that was great. Deputy Larassee's got a real good story about the lower right, that's a small fire we had on Main Street. He'll get into that a little bit. Then some of the fires, this fire on the left was a fire in North Attleboro. They had two fires at once, we ended up at this fire early on, helped them extinguish that. The fire on the upper right was a fire in Plainville, the YMCA, over the summer, unfortunately. And then the fire on the lower right was a very, very cold night off of Edwards Road. We had a fire with freezing temperatures. The fire apparatus were still finding issues, that the mechanic's still chasing issues from the truck freezing because it was so cold, but again, just to kind of year in view, very busy year. Motor vehicle accidents still kind of top the list as far as critical incidents we respond to. We had a number of fatal motor vehicle accidents this year, probably the most that we've had in the last 10 years, I'd say. So you can see a variety of different motor vehicle accidents. The one in the center is particularly tragic, after a bunch of rain over the summer in late August. We had a rollover in the median of 495. The individual that was occupying the vehicle was ejected and subsequently drowned in the median, there was so much water, so again, particularly tragic there. Deputy Chief Buckley?
So I'll go through these quickly, so just to give you a quick update on our aspect with the human resources. This just, really just shows you the last two years and this year's sick leave analysis, and you can basically see that pretty much matched what we did last year. This year, we have two members out, long-term sick leave slash FMLA. One, and there was a personal issue. One was a foot surgery, and the other one was a personal family issue, that they were out long-term. So we do not have a sick leave problem in our department. We were pretty proud of that fact. I mean, obviously, employees take their time when they need it, but we don't have, you know, in some other communities, they do have an issue where employees use the sick leave when they're technically not sick. So again, we had zero injured-on-duty claims, some of the HR. So we had two retirements, firefighter Kristen Agribads after 20-plus years, firefighter John Korpakas after 20-plus years. We had two members resign, went off to different life choices in their world. We had four new hires, we had firefighter Joe Durber, firefighter Jake Pantano, firefighter Zach Smith, and firefighter Trevor Shute. We had two promotions this year, we had Lieutenant Matthew Triani and Lieutenant Corey Shepherdson. So Gillette Stadium, one of my functions is the liaison between Gillette Stadium and the fire department. We had a total of 79 licensed events with department resources in 2023, and we had 54 in 2022. So we, they told us we were going to have an increase, and they weren't kidding. Each event requires a meeting with state and public safety officials. Logistics and staff for each event are unique. So depending on what type of event they're having, it could be Luke Combs all the way down to, you know, a Carol G., which was different, but it really, it wasn't a sold-out event in that aspect. So different logistics and different moving parts in that aspect. So obviously, the Army-Navy, so Lieutenant Shepherdson and I started this 18 months ago. We started the process 18 months ago, and over, we really started last January with quarterly meetings. And then the last month, and a month and a half, the chief and I were in meetings, some days up to three meetings in one day. So if you were there, you saw it, it was flawless, I think Doc mentioned that. It was a flawless event, it was awesome, it's something you really have to see. But, you know, I think it was the work that everybody here in the fire department did. We, you know, we all came together, and one of the aspects of it, you know, it wasn't just another football game, because there was three different parts moving into that whole event. And when the game started at 3:05, it was a football game, but everything before then was just so different. The VIPs, the pageantry, logistics in that aspect. And I think it was a really good trial for World Cup Soccer, which is coming in 2026, where they're saying guaranteed eight, and they're saying that it's pretty much eight Super Bowls. So every one will be a Super Bowl, just the logistic aspect. We just had another meeting yesterday. So that's not for another two years, and we're already started that process.
So we're going to get eight games as part of the World Cup?
Minimum.
Minimum, okay, thank you.
Yep. And we fear that, the talk is we're getting long, but... One thing I just really want to talk about, and I, because I didn't put this in the slide in it. So we did just have, it's been a four-year work in progress. We've been working to become a nationally accredited fire department. There's only 13, or there's 311 fire departments in the entire United States that are nationally accredited. So we've been working on that. Last week, we had the four assessors from the accreditation come, and they audited all the work that we've done. And they were here for, again, for the entire week. There was a chief from Kansas, there was a chief from Virginia, there was a captain from Andrews Air Force Base, and then there was another chief from Fort Lauderdale Fire. So they sat down again and just interviewed anybody who assisted in putting this program together. So Chris Gallagher and his team, Paige sat with them, the union president, you name it, IT, Paige E. sat with them, so they all sat with them and just, they just answered all the questions that they had, so. One of the things, so there was 11 categories that we had to cover, and there was over 250 individual questions that we had to fill out. So they asked a question on our aspect, we had to research it and answer those. So I just wanted to let you know, so I will tell you, Friday in the morning, they gave us their blessing that they were going to recommend us to be accredited, they're supporting us. We're heading to Orlando at the end of February to sit in front of the commission. I think it's an 11-person commission. We will sit in front of them and present what we've done, and hopefully, we'll be coming home with the accreditation. We will be the first and only municipal fire department in Massachusetts that has this accreditation. We will be the third in New England. The other two are Hartford, Connecticut, and Hartford, Vermont. Hartford, Vermont is actually, consists of three communities, and one of them is White River Junction, which you may know right as soon as you go over the New Hampshire border. So we're excited about that, and we hope to be coming back to you in March and letting you know. Pass it off to Deputy Larassee.
So want to talk about, I know you probably remember about two years ago, we started a program, not a program, but we started surveying the apartment buildings in town, six units or greater, to see, you know, what they had for fire protection and to see if they met the state codes. So during our survey, we found that almost every single apartment building did not comply with state code. So in the last two years, we've had, we're up to, right now, we have about 300 apartments that have been brought up to date, not buildings, but apartment units, which is pretty crazy to think that many out there weren't. We're on track, we'll hopefully, keep our fingers crossed by the end of this year that all apartment buildings... buildings in Foxborough will be brought up to the, the required state standards, um, that were required of them at the, uh, at the time of the notices. So we've had really good luck. We've had real good buy-in. Uh, we've had companies, you know, as like Pau Vu Construction, who owns a ton of property in town, their initial investment was like $300,000 for upgrades with, and no pushback because they bought in, they knew the, they knew, you know, how important this was to protect their residents, which is great. So, uh, one of the outcomes of, of this, um, upgrades, the fire alarm is, uh, we, 33 Main Street, they installed a new fire alarm system. We did our final inspection and compliance test on Thursday morning and around 10 o'clock that, two days later on Saturday morning, um, fire alarm received notification, uh, dispatch received notification, there was a fire alarm activation, um, from a smoke detector in the basement. We dispatched our personnel, they arrived on location, found smoke coming from the basement, immediately advanced to the basement, the hose line, and they extinguished the fire before, before it was able to grow into anything significant. But having that system in place, and luckily it was in place, um, and it was only, it had been there, you know, signed off for two days. We don't, fire doubles in size every minute. So, you know, you could just imagine what that old house would have done. And at the time, prior to the installation of the fire alarm system, there was only one smoke detector that would protect that area. And to be local, it would only ring in the basement. So no one would have known there was a fire down there. So we're pretty lucky and pretty fortunate that, that, that business owner did, did upgrade the system. So I want to talk about something that's, you know, we're getting really busy in town with, um, with solar panels, right? So, so solar panels and energy storage under the new fire code, we're the authority having jurisdiction on that, even though the building department and the electrical department both, um, have input and they, they also permit. But basically what I wanted to talk about tonight was more of like a, like a public address to the people watching tonight on, on, what we're trying to, what we want to ask people is, we, we know that they have to permit, everyone knows they have to permit these systems and come to us, but by the time they get to us, contracts are signed, documents, you know, you know, doc, contracts, documents assigned, plans are drawn, we would like people in town, if you're going to put energy storage, so energy storage is basically a battery in your house that the solar panels charge or your line, your line voltage charges. And when there's a power outage, the battery kicks in. So it's just a battery that powers your house. What we want to ask people to do is come to us first, reach out to us, and we want to give you, we want to evaluate where you put it and we want some input. When these batteries malfunction and catch fire, it, it's very difficult to put them out because the, what they do is they off gas and they have, you know, carbon dioxide, common oxide, hydrogen. So the fire, the, the fire feeds itself and it just basically, they're hard for us to put out. They're, they're, it's called thermal runaway. It gets away from us. So what we want to try to do is see, most people, we try to persuade them to put them in their garage because your garage already has 5A sheet rock, fire door protection. So basically I brought this up tonight so I could reach, so maybe people at home can sit, you know, this might, if they, if someone's watching, they can come to me, we can talk about it, we'll find the best place, the safest place. We've found a couple installations that were against code. They just put them in people's basements in the kids' playroom with no fire protection. And most basements only, they have two ways out. Usually one's a bulkhead that kids can't open, the other one's up the stairs. So, um, this is just a public service announcement. If you could just, if you, if you're going to do this, reach out to me, I'll come to your house, I'll, I'll, uh, find the best and safest place for you to, to install it.
Uh, so, good evening again. Um, so as Chief alluded to, we've seen an increase in the number of calls for service. Looking at maybe just 300 calls more last year, so, uh, for the county year from, uh, 12-1. Um, we've seen an increase in number of fatalities related to motor vehicle accidents. One of the things we've looked at in our outcome data is the success of our providers and the care, the level of care they've been providing. So actually beginning of this week, um, we are endeavoring with the encouragement of our service medical director and affiliate medical director, uh, with Strati Hospital, to approach, um, a medication-assisted intubation program. Um, now this is a, quite the undertaking and a level of commitment from the providers and based on their performance, uh, our medics are starting this week in the operating room on a Strati Hospital, working with anesthesiologists, um, looking at various factors that facilitate our management, um, such as patient positioning, pre-oxygenation and the administrative medications to successfully pass a tube, pass bronchials for adequate ventilation. Um, and a lot of this goes back into, um, owning what we do in the community and providing that level of service, especially as we start to look at outside forces like the Army Navy game or, you know, um, the World Cup. Beginning of the year, um, we worked with Gillette Stadium and South veterinary school and we hosted a large training site. The state had mandated canine first aid for police dogs, uh, that are injured in the line of duty. Um, so we trained 500 providers, um, the largest one-time training event, um, in the state at that time, um, to meet a very strict deadline, um, and requirements. And we did that successfully, working with South veterinary school and the stadium staff. Um, with public health, you know, we, we worked, um, very collaboratively, um, with our new addition Christina Rose, who's been, um, a stalwart, um, since she arrived on day one. Um, you know, we, we've looked at public health and we looked at the health, health and safety of our members, not just our members internally, but how they respond externally. So a healthy workforce provides a better service to the community. We've been really working well with Christina in that endeavor. Um, we've also been working with, um, Strati Hospital, um, council and agency to identify and respond to my health equity gaps we have, um, in the community. We've also worked with our colleagues in the schools, Jen Rosenberg and her dedicated staff to host flu clinics. We've worked with the Sage School. We've also hosted public, public clinics for public safety and the town employees. In terms of public health and disease surveillance, um, we monitor direct office visual therapy. Um, and that's what we have to visualize, the administrative medications for patients maybe going, undergoing tuberculosis medications, things of that nature. We continue to do our COAPPP clinics and medic, medication reconciliations, excuse me. Um, and that includes home visits where we can do B12 injections, safety inspections, um, and that kind of might tie into what Christina might talk about in a few moments with the Grab Bar program. Um, and we continue to go, our community and faculty CPR courses as well.
All right. I'm going to introduce the star of the day. So, uh, so Christina joined us in February?
Yes, February.
February. So, um, just like, uh, Tom Kenvin, when he showed up, uh, we had the COVID crisis, Christina showed up and, uh, we had, um, we had a migrant in our community where she was instrumental, her and Tom, their collaboration to, to help, uh, assimilate that into the community and take care of that issue. Really couldn't have done it without her. Uh, as you, as you remember, we had two administrative people in our department, one, one left for another job. And, uh, at the time, Bill Keegan, uh, we kind of had a discussion, I, we, we had identified the need with Chief Grace to have a community social worker, uh, working directly with public safety. And that's, uh, that's when we found Christina. She is a previous employee. We kept in touch, kind of leaned on her as we were building this program and, uh, thank God she applied and, and, uh, here she is. So, uh, I will turn it over to you.
Pass the torch. Thank you. All right. So, um, the role, um, a lot of, um, departments call this a co-responder model or a co-response role, where, uh, you work directly with the police and fire. Uh, our role here is really interesting where we've worked contracted specifically with the fire department. Not a lot of other towns are doing that. We're one of only, I think, one of the only towns that are having a clinical social worker within the fire department. I know of one other town that has a social services person, um, but not in quite the same capacity, where this role is really unique, where I'm able to kind of bridge between the police and fire. And we work on a lot of mutual calls that way. So I think we're, we're able to kind of, be able to liaise between both departments. Um, so I'll respond with fire and EMS as well as police to urgent social service calls. Um, that can look like a lot of different things. It could look like a house fire, domestic violence, substance use, um, mental health emergency. Um, I do a lot of follow-up. I think a big portion of this job is, is follow-up. Uh, I think that's where, you know, I think a lot of the issues come up where, you know, we get rid of, deal with the emergency, but then I think a lot of times, once they're at the emergency room, there's not a lot of follow-up. You know, I think the hospital doesn't have the capacity, fire and police don't have the capacity. So that's a really interesting part of my role where I can kind of keep working with them after the hospital, try, try to prevent them from going back to the hospital or, you know, prevent any other issues that are happening so we can address the issue at the source. Uh, potentially we could reduce the number of calls. Um, I assist, assist with evaluating individuals to assess, uh, appropriate level of care. Do they need to go to the hospital? Do they have the choice? Do I have to, do we have to work with them? Um, you know, potentially forcing them to go to the hospital due to safety concerns, um, connecting people with resources. I'm working very closely with a lot of, a lot of different departments, specifically council on aging. Uh, Tom and I work closely with public health. Um, even the library, we have a lot of mutual people that we're running into in a lot of different departments. So co-response is a model that started, um, in Massachusetts anyways, in 2003, uh, in Framingham, and then we've just seen a snowball effect, uh, I think the last couple of years. A lot of departments have signed on to co-response models, and I think a lot of them are moving more closely to working with, um, employees directly hired from the town. There's a few models where you can have a third-party agency managing the program, but I think, um, working with some of my colleagues, we've all realized, I think we have a lot more autonomy when we're working directly with the town. Um, and these programs are just kind of founded on the understanding that working together, clinicians, fire, EMS, law enforcement can respond most appropriately to the needs of the community. Um, I think we can kind of consider this another tool in the tool belt, if you will. Um, and like, like I had mentioned before, like we're kind of one of the only departments doing this with the fire. Um, so I thought it would be interesting to kind of show you guys a little bit of our call breakdown. Um, it's really hard to gauge the data because one day I might get called by the police on a client and the next day I might get called with EMS on a client. Um, but essentially how we track things, it looks like about, you know, a little over 50% are police. I would say probably even more than a quarter is the fire. Um, but then I start to track community-based referrals. The library might call, a concerned citizen might call. Um, I work closely, like I said, with the council on aging, um, and then, um, the health department and people can self-refer. So just as some kind of slight statistics, um, I've, we've had tracking interactions. I track every interaction that I have. There's almost 800 interactions since I started. There's about 290, or maybe less than that, around a little over 200, uh, unique individuals that I've served. So, um, the 800 or so interactions could be more than one person, more than one time. Um, but there's been at least over 200 unique individuals served. I think 90 individuals have only, you know, crossed paths one time with me. Um, and I think these are just unique statistics to keep a track of, to see what population we're serving. So here's the call breakdown. In 10 months, uh, like I said, we're close to 800 interactions at this point. I've prepared this a couple of weeks ago now. Um, it's 222 unduplicated interactions, so that means 222 unique individuals, which is already increased just by today. Uh, 86 individuals with only one interaction. And when I say 90 total evaluations, this kind of looks like a full evaluation, does this person need to go to the hospital? What we would call on a section 12, this is an involuntary commitment to the hospital where they have to, uh, have a further evaluation by somebody else, um, to determine, do they need to stay at the hospital for inpatient level of care? Um, so a lot of these calls don't require a, a full evaluation. They may just require some resources, some follow-up. Um, I think a lot of my work relies in follow-up. Um, a lot of things happen after the call. So I'm getting a lot of calls after the fact, something could have happened over the weekend, they're asking me to follow up with it on Monday, um, some spillover from police overnight. Uh, I'm not kind of on call, so if something really rises to the level of kind of needing a second opinion, I might get a call, but otherwise they, they kind of save it for the next day and I'll, I'll follow up with that. Some calls in HR, specifically medical, where I might work closely with, um, Tom Kenvin. Um, we had a great success story where we got somebody to the hospital, you know, took a lot of rapport building, but it was really more specifically a medical issue, which kind of had some social services tied into it, some family dynamic issues. Um, so I think that was great. And then more recently, we did apply for, I didn't include a slide, but we did apply for a Grab Bar grant. I worked closely with Mark Craig and, uh, council on aging. Um, so it's a collaborative effort between the two departments. Tom Kenvin and Corey Shepherdson are working together with the installation of the Grab Bars. We received $10,000 to support the program, to, uh, purchase free Grab Bars, um, and get them into homes that, that need them and people who are asking for them. So, uh, I think, I think.
All right.
Torch is back to you.
Great. So again, I can't say that, anecdotally, in the last week, we had a house fire where people had some issues, you know, socially. Um, it was on a Sunday morning. It's overwhelming, you're trying to, you know, put the fire out, take care of the people. You know, they just, they, they've lost their home essentially. It's the Christmas holidays and this, so I was, I called Christina, she came right over. She dealt with the family, she got them housing, and all of that selfishly is off our plate. We can deal with the emergency, she can deal with the people aspect. And then, uh, unfortunately, we had a, um, cardiac arrest. There was a, a person that was younger in age, a young family. Again, she comes to the scene, she responds and she handles all that for us and, and make sure that, you know, we solve problems in 10 or 15 minutes. She's the one that takes the time to really make sure that people are established and they know what paths to take and what resources are available. So.
Yes.
That's Christina.
You know, Chief, every time you present, I'm increasingly impressed with, uh, how you're changing, you know, from a fire department and firefighters to really people that really, you know, function within the whole continuum of care.
We're trying, yeah.
So, so I'm hearing, uh, airway management, uh, medication reconciliation, and now you're getting into the area psychiatric referrals, substance abuse referrals. You're really pushing the envelope, and I said it last year too, you keep pushing the envelope more towards a clinical orientation and you're really transforming, you know, what a fire department is frankly, for the better and for the better for the community. Because all of these things, at the end of the day, they improve safety, they improve patient safety, they improve care and they create greater outcomes. And some of the stuff you're doing, 12 lead EKGs and stuff like that, I mean, these are really leading-edge things. And, uh, I say this every year, I think, and every year you come back and you have other things that you've added to the, to the menu. So just very impressive.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, just, just in closing, uh, our run volume continues to increase. Uh, the hospital distance is still an issue. No, what hospital is still, I have no idea when it's going to open. I wish I did. Uh, in the last two weeks, we've, we've had, uh, three building fires, um, and only one time out of those three have we had our full staffing. Um, one time, one ambulance was out, so we had six people responding. And then one time we had four people responding because both, uh, ambulances, both primary ambulances were out. So again, that, in that particular situation, both our ambulances was out, we had a call for a fire on, uh, North High Street. And at the same time, uh, the area was very, for whatever reason, was very busy that particular night. Um, we had a motor vehicle accident, a, uh, male driver struck a parked construction vehicle and, uh, that, that ended up being a fatal accident, that was the outcome. But, uh, Norwood's ambulance responded to 95 North at Mechanic Street. That's how strapped the area was for resources. So we think, uh, you know, 5:30 at night, that's a pretty long ride for Norwood to get out there because Sharon, Foxborough, Mansfield and Walpole were all busy. So that's just kind of, you know, that, that little anecdotal evidence just kind of demonstrates how busy the area has gotten. And, um, you know, so it's, you know, we're, we're, we're doing about as much as we can. The supply chain's still killing us. Uh, we ordered two ambulances, it'll be three years in April. Uh, so hopefully we'll have them by April. It won't be a full three years, but it's getting pretty close. Uh, inflation, so the cost of medical, so the two things that we buy the most of, truck parts and medical supplies, those are obviously increasing as well. So we're looking forward to, uh, to World Cup and, uh, we're also, hopefully 2025, we'll bring back an accreditation plaque. And, uh, so we have a ISO class one rating, which is the insurance industry that rates us. And then we have, we'll have the, um, accreditation. Those two things, there's less than 100 fire departments in the country that have both of those. So, you know, it's one thing to say you're the best, but I think, you know, through our actions, we actually have tangible evidence to prove that. So, uh, any questions? I know, I, 20 minutes, am I on?
That's great.
I went as fast as I could.
Katie, you wish you zoomed this one, didn't you?
Always.
Well, that's great. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, I feel like words never feel like enough to express how much you guys do for the community and just, you know, how great the department is, so thank you. It's recognized.
Thank you. Nice holiday.
Thank you, you too.
Get some rest.
All right, now to the most exciting part of our agenda, licenses renewals.
To add to a long night, we're going to read all the renewals, right?
Yep, I'm going to do the best I can. So just to start, everything will be excluding Olive and Mint.
Do you want me to read the motion and then, you want to read them all, or?
Oh, I'll just have a brief little recap.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we have 211 licenses for 2024, which is a total revenue of $147,372, which is up 5,300 from last year, which is largely imparted by Acholitos and Axel and Burn bringing in alcohol. I've collected 16 Sunday Entertainment licenses on the behalf of the Commonwealth, so that's $1,600. And just, I'd have to say, this is our most collaborative year yet, partly in due to permit eyes, thank you Paige. The way that I can talk to building, and I can talk to health, and just all three of us together, building has attached, you know, their reports for their inspection, which is in conjunction with fire. Health has signed off on those common bachelor licenses, and then through, so Scotch's has one remaining inspection, which is due for Thursday, so that will be obviously renewal conditional of Scots and fire sign off with their CI. And then for finance, there are two businesses that are just waiting for them to pay invoices. Sometimes that is really linked to the landlord needs to pay their real estate taxes, and it's not up to the business owner, so there's just a little bit of a spot there. But we will, I'll make sure that those are collected before the licenses are issued, so let's just kick it off. So the report that is on the screen was posted with the agenda, and how it reads is when the actual license was processed through our system. So October 2023, these are going to be common bachelor licenses. Dunkin' Donuts at 30 Commercial Street, Normandy Farms Campground at 72 West Street, Dunkin' Donuts at 28 Patriot Place, Dunkin' Donuts at 263 Main Street, Dairy Queen, 122 Main Street, Foxborough House of Pizza, 34 Central Street. Entertainment license, Normandy Farms, just to make note, they did overpay by $100, but the, that's why you'll see a negative $100 on page five. Normandy Farms Campground at 72 West Street, Foxborough House of Pizza, 34 Central Street. Liquor license, Shaking Crab, 4 Foxborough Boulevard, The Country Store, 22212 North Street, Normandy Farms Campground, 72 West Street, Bangkok Cafe, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough Wine and Spirits, 14 South Street, Foxborough House of Pizza, 34 Central Street. These are Class 1, 2, or 3 auto licenses. Normandy Farms Campground, 72 West Street, Foxborough Auto Sales, 140 Washington Street, Central Street Garage, 385 Central Street, Dazzle Brothers, 157 Washington Street. Now we'll move to November 2023. Farmer Series Pouring, Station 1 by Shovel Town Brewery, 1 School Street, Wormtown Brewery, 250 Patriot Place, Common Bitchular, Sweetness and Honey Bakery, 46 Central Street, The Lafayette House, 109 Washington Street, Tropical Smoothie Cafe, 6 Foxborough Boulevard, Tropical Smoothie Cafe, 22 Patriot Place, Union Straw, 8 Mechanic Street, Showcase Cinema, Deluxe Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place, Fat Tuesday, 26 Patriot Place, Gillette Stadium, 1 Patriot Place, Foxborough Realty Associates, 1 Patriot Place, Muse Paint Bar, 217 Patriot Place, The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, 392 Patriot Place, Marilyn Ford, Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center, 1 School Street, Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse, 1 Patriot Place, Mandarin Chef, 34 Mechanic Street, Pizza Time, 121 Main Street, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse, 295 Patriot Place, Bangkok Cafe, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Axel and Burn BBQ, 267 Patriot Place, How Sushi, 70 Central Street. Still continuing with common bachelor. Station 1 by Shovel Town Brewery, 44 School Street, Lakeview Pavilion, 45 Lakeview Road, Dunkin' Donuts/Baskin Robbins, 127 Main Street, Jake &amp; Joe's, 25 Foxborough Boulevard, Dunkin' Donuts, 16 Main Street, I'm sorry, 16 Washington Street, Foxborough Country Club, 33 Walnut Street, Omega Pizza, 126 Main Street, My Pearl, 121 Main Street, Ice Cream Beach Club, 10 Mechanic Street, Foxborough VFW, Post 2626, 337 Coacetic Street, Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place and Hilton Garden Inn at Patriot Place, 28 Patriot Place, The Heart Patriot Place, 200 Patriot Place, Six String Grill and Stage, 275 Patriot Place, 99 Restaurant Pub, 4 Fisher Street, Foxborough Mandarin Restaurant, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, McDonald's, 212 North Street, Extreme Craze, 30 Commercial Street, The Scorpion Bar Mexican Cantina, 253 Patriot Place, Papaginos, 211 North Street, Splitsville Howl at the Moon, 220 Patriot Place, Papaginos, 8 Commercial Street, Tavallino, 274 Patriot Place, Citizen Crest, 229 Patriot Place, Menche's Patriot Place, 268 Patriot Place, Foxborough Sports Center Cafe, 10 East Belcher Road, Rally Point In-N-Out Pub, 9 Mechanic Street, Wormtown Brewery, 250 Patriot Place, Curry Leaf, 29 Washington Street, Conrad's, 121 Main Street, Gunther Tooties, 42 Central Street, Sonesta Select, Boston, Foxborough, 35 Foxborough Boulevard, Shaking Crab, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, The Commons Eatery and Cafe, 20 Central Street, Starbucks Coffee, number 59326, 74 Washington Street, Bar Louis Tavern and Grill, 232 Patriot Place, Fusion 5, 10105 Washington Street, Foxborough Nutrition, 50 Central Street, Antonia's Italian Cuisine, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Crazy Axes, 202, I'm sorry, 202 Patriot Place, Uncle Buck Snack Shop, 1 Bass Pro Drive, Five Guys Burgers and Fries, number 374, 269 Patriot Place, Hampton Inn and Suites, Foxborough/Mansfield, 2 Foxborough Boulevard, Skip Jack's, 226 Patriot Place, Acholitos Taqueria, 265 Patriot Place, Starbucks Coffee, number 47754, 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Cupcake Charlie's, 262 Patriot Place, Lovely Pizza, 6 River Ave/Bird Street, Red Robins, America's Gourmet Burger and Spirits, 201 Patriot Place, Cell Street Pizzeria, 16 South Street, Helix Esports, 23 Patriot Place, Crumble Cookie, 22 Patriot Place, Chickie Flynn's, 94 Washington Street, Subway, 18 Central Street, Von Moy, 8 Wall Street. Moving to entertainment licenses, The Lafayette House, 109 Washington Street. Skipping the one that says minus 100, that's the Normandy Farms credit. Fat Tuesday, 26 Patriot Place, Union Straw, 8 Mechanic Street, Foxborough Realty Associates, 1 Patriot Place, Gillette Stadium, 1 Patriot Place, The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, number 1808, 392 Patriot Place, Showcase Cinema Deluxe, Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place. They double-paid their entertainment license, all their annual entertainment license, that's the, that's marked as a double payment. Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts, 1 School Street, Shaking Crab, 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse, 1 Patriot Place, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse, 295 Patriot Place, Bangkok Cafe, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Showcase Cinema Deluxe, Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place, How Sushi, 70 Central Street, Axel and Burn BBQ, 267 Patriot Place, Station 1 by Shovel Town Brewery, 44 School Street, Lakeview Pavilion, 45 Lakeview Road, Jake &amp; Joe's, 25 Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough Country Club, 33 Wall Street, My Pearl, 121 Main Street, Ice Cream Beach Club, 10 Mechanic Street, Six String Grill and Stage, 275 Patriot Place, Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place and Hilton Garden Inn at Patriot Place, 28 Patriot Place, The Heart Patriot Place, 200 Patriot Place, Foxborough VFW, Post 2626, 337 Coacetic Street, Foxborough Mandarin Restaurant, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, 99 Restaurant and Pub, 4 Fisher Street, Extreme Craze, 30 Commercial Street, The Scorpion Bar Mexican Cantina, 253 Patriot Place, Papaginos, 8 Commercial Street, Papaginos, 211 North Street, Splitsville Howl at the Moon, 220 Patriot Place, Tavallino, 274 Patriot Place, Citizen Crest, 229 Patriot Place, Conrad's Restaurant, 121 Main Street, Rally Point, Rally Point In-N-Out Pub, 9 Mechanic Streets, Sonesta Select, Boston, Foxborough, 35 Foxborough Boulevard, Wormtown Brewery, 250 Patriot Place, Crazy Axes, 202 Patriot Place, Fusion 5, 105 Washington Street, Starbucks Coffee, number 59326, 74 Washington Street, Hampton Inn Suites and Foxborough/Mansfield, 2 Foxborough Boulevard, Skip Jack's, 226 Patriot Place, Acholitos, 265 Patriot Place, Bar Louis Tavern and Grill, 232 Patriot Place, Starbucks Coffee, number 47754, 4 Foxborough Boulevard, Curry Leaf, 29 Washington Street, Chickie Flynn's, 94 Washington Street, Uncle Buck Snack Shop, 1660 Bass Pro Drive, Helix Esports, 2 Patriot Place, Red Robins, America's Gourmet Burgers and Spirits, 201 Patriots Place, Foxborough Sports Center, 10 East Belcher Road. This is Taxi Cab Limousine Livery is Maurice Cab of Foxborough. This is liquor licenses moving to Showcase Cinema Deluxe at Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place, The Lafayette House, 109 Washington Street, Trader Joe's, number 2528, 350 Patriots Place, Fat Tuesday, 266 Patriot Place, Union Straw, 8 Mechanic Street, Gillette Stadium, 1 Patriot Place, The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, number 1808, 392 Patriot Place, Muse Paint Bar, 217 Patriot Place, Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center, 1 School Street, Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse, 1 Patriot Place, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse, 295 Patriot Place, How Sushi, 70 Central Street, Foxborough Mandarin Restaurant, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, My Pearl, 121 Main Street, Stadium Mobile, 20 Washington Street, Lakeview Pavilion, 45 Lakeview Road, Jake &amp; Joe's Sports Grill, 25 Foxborough Boulevard, Express Mini Mart, 126 Main Street, Foxborough Country Club, 33 Walnut Street, 99 Restaurant and Pub, 4 Fisher Street, Red Robin, America's Gourmet Burgers, 201 Patriot Place, Sonesta Select, Foxborough, 35 Foxborough Boulevard, Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place and Hilton Garden Inn at Patriot Place, 28 Patriot Place, Six String, Six String Grill and Stage, 275 Patriot Place, Tavallino Restaurant, supposed to be 1 Patriot Place, excuse me, Route 1 Liquor Mart, 29 Washington Street, Quick Stop Beer and Wine, 79 Summer Street, Citizen Crest, 21 Patriot Place, Sonesta Select, Foxborough, 35 Foxborough Boulevard, Hops and Grapes Variety Store, 30 Commercial Street, Foxborough VFW, Post 2626, 337 Coacetic Street, The Heart Patriot Place, 200 Patriot Place, The Scorpion Bar Mexican Cantina, 253 Patriot Place, Splitsville Howl at the Moon, 220 Patriot Place, Axel and Burn BBQ, 267 Patriot Place, Conrad's Restaurant, 121 Main Street, Rally Point In-N-Out Pub, 9 Mechanic Street, Bar Louis Tavern and Grill, 232 Patriot Place, Acholitos Taqueria, 265 Patriot Place, Fusion 5, 105 Washington Street, Crazy Axes, 202 Patriot Place, Skip Jack's, 226 Patriot Place, Hampton Inn and Suites, Foxborough/Mansfield, 2 Foxborough Boulevard, Chickie Flynn's, 94 Washington Street, Helix Esports, 23 Patriot Place. Moving to Class 1, 2, 3 Autos, Allianz Rental Group, 3 Phelps Drive, Auto East, 59 Washington Street, Rodman Ford Sales, 45 Washington Street, Jadco Auto Sales, 58 Leonard Street, Rodman Ford Sales, 101 Washington Street, Auto Rescue Towing and Recovery, 131 Moore Street, Foxborough Auto Gallery, 130 Washington Street, Foxborough Automotive, 10 Main Street, D. Rounds Trucking, 1 Spring Brook Road, Al's Motor Company, 105 Main Street, Congdon Auto Center, 6 South Street, Moms Foxborough, 1,000 Washington Street. Movie theater, Showcase Cinema Deluxe at Patriot Place, 24 Patriot Place. These are now December 2023. Common Bitchular, Olive and Mint Ambrosia, 2 Washington Street, Everything Bagel, 211 North Street, Entertainment, Olive and Mint Ambrosia, 2 Washington Street, Liquor License, Olive and Mint Ambrosia, 2 Washington Street. Class 1, 2, 3 Autos, Booth Unleashed, LLC, 16 Windsor Drive, Auto Express, 95 Washington Street, Burnett Auto Works, 29R Wall Street. And then just to show at the bottom, the checks collected, the second number is credit cards minus that $350, which was overpayment, and then the total on the bottom right-hand side.
You can take a breath now.
And it's not so good.
Let's get in that motion real quick.
All right, motion to approve all 2024 license renewals for alcohol, common bachelor, entertainment, movie theater, class, autos, Class 1, 2, and 3, automatic amusement and arcades, except for the licenses for Nerve Eye Inc. Doing Business As Olive and Mint.
Second. Any further discussion?
I'm going to recuse myself for Union Straw and Ice Cream Beach Club that can vote on everything else.
Awesome. All those in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. Moving on, Town Manager's Search. Search Committee held their interviews December 11th at the Boyd and Library in the community meeting room. Finalists will be named January 3rd, 2024, 6:00 PM, here in the Gala Meeting Room. Acting Town Manager's report.
Yes, so I'll be quick. So obviously, there was a major windstorm yesterday from SEMREC. We got some interesting stats. Between 1,600, 600 and 1,600 hours on Monday, SEMREC staff answered 672 911 calls, 21 of which were rolled over from a neighboring emergency communication facility who could not answer due to call loading. They, SEMREC rolled zero calls. For perspective, a typical day yields an average of 911 calls, and they got 672, so it was a little busy. Needless to say, public safety was extremely busy. From DPW, DPW cleanup efforts are going on. The wind gust ranged from 50 to 90 miles per hour, and the rainfall was between 2 and 3 inches. Most roadways have been made passable. I hear Walnut Street has been cleared while during this meeting, I got a text from Chris. But still, they're advising caution for motorists, and there was still a closure at Water Street at the dam and Mill Street near the skate park area. Please be advised that Public Works does not have the capacity to collect fallen trees or branches from private property, so please don't place any branches on the side of the road because they will not be picked up. We are opening the compost site on Thursday and Friday from 8 to 4, and no sticker is needed, so if residents need to bring their branches there, that's where they should go. Common cleanup, I know everybody's seen the big branches from the tree coming down. That's probably not going to happen until next week because they really have to focus on the roadways and the more safety issues, but they will be managing that next week. If residents observe any downed wires, please avoid them while they wait for National Grid. DPW is going to come in on January 30th, and we will be asking National Grid to come in and talk to the board again to talk about issues. Obviously, a storm like today, or yesterday, it's obvious what happened, but there have been some complaints, you know, Villa Drive lost power on November 30th, and as always, we always follow up that with them to find. Just for folks, if anybody's still watching at home, one question today was asked about why Foxborough doesn't have municipal power, their own municipal power, and I know you guys have talked about this before, but there is a law that does require, does allow a town to do a municipal light plant, but unfortunately, it requires sign-off or approval from the investor-owned utility, such as National Grid, and it also, more prohibitively, requires the town to buy all the distribution equipment. So to put it in perspective, there's been no municipal power service created since 1926, except for Devon's, and that was through special legislation. So, you know, there, that's why, and I know everybody wants Foxborough to get into the light business, and we would if we could. That said, we are committed to looking at alternatives, and whether there's future advancements, we'll be doing that in the future, but we do understand the frustration, and particularly when there isn't a storm, it is frustrating that Foxborough does seem to lose power more often than other communities. The Gala Meeting Room was open today for Wi-Fi and charging, and we did have at least four people. When I came in a couple of times, I saw at least four people in here, so it was great. I don't know if more people cycled in and out. Last week, you might have seen the news that the Lieutenant Governor was here on Walnut Street and announced $25 million in funding for the Walnut Street Housing Project, so the groundbreaking for that project is expected in spring of 2024, so it's actually really moving quickly, even though it moves at a snail's pace. MBTA Communities, we talked about it here, the next discussion is going to be held at the January 4th Planning Board meeting, so anybody interested in that, come on by or tune in. And we're also going to talk about the Auditorium Project and zoning that night as well with the Planning Board. So June 4th, Planning Board will be a fun meeting, and now that the Army-Navy game is over, I think Mike Kelleher mentioned that we are already planning for World Cup, we were all in a meeting yesterday, I had a second meeting with Jake Ockingclaus's office, so we are working on that already. And just so folks know, the common bench applications are currently being accepted, and people should check out the website. I have some updates from the Town Clerk's Office. You can start licensing your dog now, and to avoid the $25 late fee, you should make sure you get your license by March 1st. Census, Census says, Census will be going out in the next week or two, and folks are asked to return them as soon as possible. Nomination Papers, it's almost that time, so they're going to be available beginning Tuesday, January 16th, and the annual town election is scheduled for May 6th. The nomination papers have to be returned on March 18th, so we do have two seats open on this board, I think Leah and Seth, you're both up, just so you know. I'm sure you knew that.
That was a lifetime appointment. What are you talking about?
All right, well, thank you. Human Resources update, we are still on the same Communication Director and Board of Health Inspector. We are having a heck of a time with that Board of Health Inspector. We made an offer, and unfortunately, it wasn't accepted, so back to the drawing board. It's that time of year, so Town Hall's going to have some closures, December 22nd, this Friday, Town Hall will be closed. Obviously, it'll be closed on Christmas, and then January 1st, and then just two weeks later, Martin Luther King Day on January 15th. So, and then on the week between Christmas and New Year's, there's an IT upgrade scheduled to move us to Office 365 and multi-factor authentication, so we're big, big, exciting moves. Lastly, I'll just give you your normal construction updates on South Street and Cedar Street, the raw water main, it's moved now to 28 Cedar Street, and the new pipeline will eventually turn north on South Street as approaches the 495 Bridge. And on the East and Coacetic Street intersection, the contractor has indicated that the pedestrian-activated crossing beacon should be in by the end of next week, and that will complete the project. And that's all I've got.
All right, one more thing on the sort of selectmen's update, you know, All right. One more thing on the sort of selectmen's update. You know, Paige glazed over really quickly about the Lieutenant Governor coming the other day. But that was a really pretty big event. It was well-attended. There was a tent set up because it was kind of a chilly day. Lieutenant Governor was there, the Commissioner on Housing was there, the, all the players with alphabet soup from the state that were there, you know, promoting that project. And I got to tell you, everyone spoke highly of Paige and what she's done over these last nine years, ten years, when she first started that project, how great it was working with her, how we've gotten to that point. Her, her staff, Greg Spear, that whole unit of people that first started it years ago, John Micklemore, I think, was the one that, that, you know, attorney here in town and a volunteer with a lot of things. And it was just very cool to see how respected you are, Paige, and, 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 it's a big feather in the cap of Foxborough having that. You know, they were all psyched to have that, that, that unit, that unit there and going forward. So, having said that, yes.
Of course you were there.
And you were there.
Glad that you were in the corner there.
And that's it. There we go.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy holidays.